Good afternoon and welcome back to the Special Budget Committee for December 12th. In this budget committee, we are getting some of the foundational aspects of the budget taken care of. Since we are in a different room, as far as Microsoft Teams go, I'd like to run through the individual counselors and make sure that we have everybody's microphone and camera working properly and that they are in this room. So by way of the role, I'd like to start with Counselor Diego Gammon.
Mr. Chair here and ready for the afternoon.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Counselor Hensby.
District Two here for part two.
Good stuff. Counselor Kent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. District Three is in place.
Super. Thank you. Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. District Four also here, ready to roll.
Good stuff. Thank you. Counselor Austin.
Here and accounted for, Mr. Chair.
Super. Thank you. Counselor Mancini, are you with us yet? Counselor Mason.
Present and accounted for, Mr. Chair, sir.
Good stuff. Thank you. Counselor Smith.
District Eight, ready to debate.
Thank you. Counselor Cleary.
Well, I had no idea Lindell was going to throw down. District Nine, present, accounted for, ready to go.
Thank you. Counselor Morris.
Present, ready to go. Thank you.
Good stuff. Thank you. Counselor Cuddle.
I'm here, District Eleven, little slice of heaven.
There you go. Thank you. Counselor Stoddard, it looks like a bar has been set.
Well, I didn't think fast enough. Here and ready to go, District Twelve.
Good stuff. Thank you. Counselor Lovelace.
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Chair, and I'm ready to rumble.
Good stuff. Counselor Blackburn.
District Fourteen in the house. Good afternoon, everyone.
There we go. Thank you. Counselor Othet.
In Bedford, twist, twist.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mike Savage, Mayor of Halifax. Will we invest in people but hold the line on tax?
There we go. Thank you. So at this point, we are dealing with item number five on our agenda, which is the 2021 to 25 Strategic Priorities Plan that identifies the council priorities. And at this point, I'd like to begin by handing it over to the CAO.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Mayor, members of Regional Council, I'm certainly pleased to present to you today the proposed council priorities for the 2125 Strategic Priorities Plan. This represents the collective strategic planning work of a lot of people, of Regional Council, supported by cross-departmental council priority teams in alignment with Regional Council's direction on December 1st, 2020. And I want to thank everyone involved for the exceptional collaboration and effort that was gone into this work. Approval of these priorities officially launches the business planning and budget process. Business units will present starting in February, departmental activities linked to the strategic initiatives Regional Council approves today. Our collective delivery of measures consistent with those priorities and associated results are reported annually through the multi-year strategic planning process. And this presentation provides the opportunity for Regional Council to provide strategic input early into the process, into the business planning and budget process, and seek clarification and adjust strategic priorities before we bring the business units' budgets forward. This is really important for the administration, that we have to get this direction so we actually produce a budget that meets your priorities. So Regional Council may request clarification and suggest changes to any of the strategic initiatives presented today further to your direction last month. Items of a budgetary nature will be deferred to the business planning and budget process. Slide one, please. So Halifax Regional Municipalities Current Strategic Planning Framework Plan on the page was developed in 2015. It is revisited and confirmed annually during the multi-year strategic planning process and is intended to articulate the values of the organization and demonstrate key priorities. Regional Council priority areas and associated priority outcomes are established by Regional Council. Administrative priority areas are established by the CAO as an enabler of Regional Council's priorities. The CAO's administrative priorities are attached to your agenda package as an information report. I won't be going through those today, but they're there for your information and for that of the public. The Strategic Planning Framework is intended to reflect the four-year mandate of Regional Council and the administration. Slide two, please. So you'll see the council priorities are basically headed through four categories: prosperous economy, communities, integrated mobility, and environment. Slide three, please. So changes recommended by Regional Council in December have been incorporated for the prosperous economy priority area and are highlighted here in red. So to support this prosperous economy priority area, there are three key priority outcomes: economic growth, holistic planning, and talent attraction and retention. So slide four, please. Under each of the priority outcomes are several strategic initiatives. Current and planned strategic initiatives under the economic growth priority outcome are COVID-19 Economic Response and Recovery Plan. Municipality is working with the Halifax Partnership, other governments, universities, and colleges, and the private and not-for-profit sectors to implement the COVID-19 Economic Response and Recovery Plan to help the community weather the urgent healthcare, social, environmental, and economic crises and get back to the municipality's long-term growth trend. The African Nova Scotia Road to Economic Prosperity Action Plan is work that's being undertaken by the municipality and the Halifax Partnership with the African Nova Scotia community to address historic and present economic challenges and opportunities, as well as advance economic development and community priorities by focusing on facilitating the advancement of unity and capacity among African Nova Scotians, establishing land ownership, developing infrastructure, attracting investment, and increasing participation in education, employment, and entrepreneurship. The municipality and the Halifax Partnership will develop and implement a 2227 economic strategy to attract, keep, and grow talent, investment, and jobs in HRM. And that work has started, and we intend to unveil a new strategy early in 2022. Relation to the Tourism Master Plan, HRM will support Discover Halifax's launch and implementation of the long-term Tourism Master Plan to guide tourism growth and build better communities for visitors and residents. We intend to bring the plan to Regional Council for consideration in the next month, March Cogswell District Project, this is a project that's been talked about for many years, and we're on the cusp of making that happen. That project will transform land and aged, underutilized transportation infrastructure into a vibrant mixed-use neighborhood, reintegrating historic aspects of downtown and the waterfront within the North End of Halifax. Project is intended, subject to final direction from Regional Council, to be shovel-ready by fall of 2021. Relation to rural planning program implementation, we are developing a rural land use management framework which considers both planning, applications, and policy in response to issues facing residents and businesses of our municipalities' rural areas, and help improve the economic, environmental, and cultural resiliency of rural communities. Relation to commercial taxation options, municipality will assess, develop, and implement, where appropriate, commercial taxation policy changes per Regional Council's direction and the fiscal sustainability strategy, including a three-year phase-in of assessment increases and the tiering of tax rates based on assessment and geography. We've been working for a number of years now, certainly since 2016, on regulatory modernization framework. And this multi-year initiative will address a joint project partnership of the province of Nova Scotia, supported by key private sector representatives, to continue to reduce red tape for business. Halifax Innovation Outpost, through a partnership with the Halifax Partnership and the outpost, municipality will support the innovation community and evolve their ideas, or to evolve their ideas, excuse me. This includes opportunities to leverage municipal infrastructure and assets such as streetlights and buildings for early testing and design, and provide space for idea generation and collaboration on key social issues such as climate change, food security, and of course, improving municipal transparency through data modeling and visualization projects. Slide five, please. One of the current and planned initiatives under the holistic planning priority outcome include streetscaping, which considers elements such as trees, lighting, street furniture, surface materials, underground wiring, planters, and more can be used to animate and support the streets function as part of the public realm, beyond its role as a corridor for transportation. The streetscaping program will be delivered through our capital infrastructure work within the right-of-way or as part of standalone placemaking projects like the Aragon Graffin Streetscaping Project. Another strategic initiative under the holistic planning priority outcome is the sufficient supply of industrial lands. With the goal of ensuring sufficient supply of industrial land, municipality is undertaking strategic planning. We plan to maintain optimum industrial park inventory to be sold to the private sector for industrial and commercial development. Planning and development will work with corporate real estate to initiate secondary planning process for the proposed expansion of industrial parks. Informed by background studies, this work will include public engagement, developing detailed concept plans, and evaluating public infrastructure costs. Plan and Bylaw Simplification, Center Plan Package B, approval and implementation is another key strategic initiative. Center Plan Package B includes proposed policies and regulations for areas designated as established residential areas, downtown Halifax, and Cogswell, interchanged lands, parks, public spaces, institutional employment, small-scale institutional and industrial employment areas. Utilizing the framework that was set out through the Center Plan Process, municipality will continue Plan and Bylaw Simplification for the remainder of the urban settlement area and ensure that each of those plans are modernized. A New Regional Plan is another strategic initiative under holistic planning. The Halifax Regional Municipal Planning Strategy, otherwise known as the Regional Plan, is the overarching guide for planning in the municipality and is built on the common vision and principles for the entire region to achieve balance and sustainable growth throughout rural, suburban, and urban areas. We anticipate a new regional plan will be adopted by Regional Council in 2022. Planning and development continues to move forward on a wide range of strategic initiatives that define how the municipality proceeds from a planning perspective. These initiatives include regional planner review and improving the regulatory framework governing social planning initiatives such as affordable housing, food security, and heritage property protection. Slide six, please. Next, we have the current and planned strategic initiatives under the Talent Attraction and Retention Priority Outcome. Under Talent Attraction, municipality will support the Halifax Partnerships Connector Program, the Atlantic Innovation Pilot Recruitment Efforts, spearheaded by the federal government, and of course, other initiatives to attract talent to the Halifax region. Under Talent Retention, municipality will update and implement its immigration strategy, the newcomers welcoming plan, to welcome and settle immigrants in the municipality. We will also support the Halifax Partnerships programs aimed at retaining new immigrants, recent domestic and international graduates, and internationally trained workers. Slide seven, please. Changes recommended by Regional Council to the community's priority area have been incorporated and are indicated in red on this slide. Council has requested, had requested for all ages and abilities be added to the aspirational goal statement. However, the priority team felt that this did not include all populations, such as those who are financially disadvantaged, therefore, for all, has been added for the purpose of inclusion. This council, for the purpose of inclusion, for your consideration, clearly. This council priority area is supported by four key priority outcomes: safe communities, involved communities, inclusive communities, and affordable communities. Safe communities means residents and visitors feel safe and are supported by a network of social infrastructure that helps community members thrive. Involved communities emphasizes the importance of volunteering to the success of our region. Inclusive communities has been changed to reflect our intention that residents are empowered as stewards and advocates for their communities, and work with the municipality and others to remove systemic barriers. Affordable communities is an outcome that has been added at the request of Regional Council to highlight that the municipality will continue to demonstrate leadership and foster partnerships that provide access to a full range of quality, affordable housing options, and safe and vibrant neighborhoods. Slide eight, please. I'd like to highlight a few current and planned strategic initiatives under the safe communities priority outcome. First up is the Halifax Street Checks Report Response. So in collaboration with the Department of Police Commissioners, Department of Justice of Local Communities, HRP, will implement a comprehensive and inclusive response to the Halifax, Nova Scotia Street Checks Report, including detailed short and long-term actions involving enhanced training, team education on anti-black racism and bias, a greater focus on diversity in police cadet recruitment, proactive community engagement, and enhanced guidelines for officer conduct. Relation to the Public Strategy, 2018-2022, that is a roadmap for making evidence-informed upstream investments in community safety and well-being. Comprehensive renewal of the public safety strategy will commence in 2122 as part of the Public Safety and Policing Review that is ongoing. In terms of the police response, to enhance HRP's ability to respond to the communities we serve and provide evidence-based and problem-oriented policing, HRP will undertake a priority response review. Based on the findings of this review, HRP will evaluate its current patrol deployment model to develop a plan for effective response and deployment to ensure proper coverage in high-call areas. Relation to improve the emergency response and fire service delivery, to improve that response, service delivery, and reduce costs, stations may be relocated, consolidated, or replaced once they become too costly to maintain and do not meet functional requirements. Slide nine, please. Next, we'll look at our current and planned strategic initiatives for involved communities. HRM will establish an anti-black racism strategy and implement a corporate action plan to guide municipality in its work with and in African Nova Scotia communities. Halifax Public Libraries intends to undertake a strategic shift to focus on community-based work and community-led engagement in relation to these programs. In relation to our Culture and Heritage Priorities Plan, sharing our stories plan will provide the vision, principles, and priorities to more effectively guide investments and decisions related to culture and heritage. Regional Council will adjudicate on that plan in the second quarter of 2122 latest. Relation to Parkland Acquisition, municipality will continue to focus on achieving regional planned parkland objectives, as well as Regional Council's direction to acquire specific parkland. In relation to the Rural Recreation Strategy Development, to address the needs of rural residents, municipality will develop and implement a rural recreation strategy to increase recreation and leisure opportunities in our rural areas. Additionally, the municipality is developing a rural active transportation strategy that will be brought to Regional Council in 2021. One Recreation. Municipality will continue to increase connection and coordination across all HRM-owned recreation facilities and both HRM and board-run operations through exploration of one membership model and a more coordinated service delivery. Youth Engagement and Support, more than 1,400 youth from all areas of municipality were consulted in the development of the original Youth Services Plan, which is in the final year of its three-year term. The Youth Services Plan Two will be established to determine effective ways of providing recreation opportunities for youth. Plan will be by the youth and for the youth. Additionally, the library will work with youth to create opportunities for young people to impact communities and shape their own futures. Library will also work with youth who are experiencing risk during life transitions. In relation to Park and Open Space Plans, municipality will identify outcomes and priorities regarding service delivery, fiscal sustainability, accessibility, and inclusion through strategic plans, including the Plainfield Strategy, the Regional Wilderness Parks Plans, Park Standards, and as well as other strategies and decision-making frameworks related to lawn bowling, courts, and recreational trails. Halifax Common Master Plan will define management policies, as well as concept and action plans for physical renewal of the space. Seniors Engagement Plan, to address the recreational needs of seniors, the municipality will develop and implement a recreation strategy to increase recreation and leisure opportunities for people aged 60-plus. I guess that includes me. So happy with that one. Slide 10. Our current and planned strategic initiatives for inclusive communities include equitable access to municipal services. Under the Diversity-Inclusion Framework, business units will develop and implement various diversity and inclusion plans and initiatives in collaboration with the Office of Diversity and Inclusion and CEO. Our Corporate Accessibility Strategy, to guide municipality in meeting the Provincial Accessibility Act goal of an accessible province by 2030, HRM will begin implementation of the Corporate Accessibility Strategy starting in the fourth quarter of 2122. Relation to Social Policy, our work in that area has three focus areas: affordable housing, food security, and connected communities. We will work to help build internal capacity across all business units and dedicate resources corporately, along with the identification of partnerships to enhance collaboration within the focus areas to serve vulnerable populations and communities, and facilitate the creation of affordable and attainable housing solutions. Under the Connected Communities theme of the social policy, municipality will enhance how the mobility system interacts with marginalized communities by enhancing partnerships with the community stakeholders like ISANs, excuse me, considering community benefits and social equity when making infrastructure investments to improve the system, and considering access to transit and active transportation facilities for vulnerable users. For example, we bring a new accessible transportation service proposal that will provide on-demand taxi-like, excuse me, my throat here, right on-demand taxi-like service to council for consideration as part of the 2122 budget adjustment list. This proposal will be first presented to the Transportation Standing Committee this In relation to the Task Force on the commemoration of the Edward Cornwallis and the recognition and commemoration of indigenous history, HRM will begin the implementation and tracking of the recommendations in the report from the task force and provide status updates to Regional Council regarding progress. In response to homelessness, HRM will explore ways to better coordinate and reduce municipality's role in preventing and responding to the issue of homelessness, including exploring new models or enhancements for the Navigator Program. An African Nova Scotia Community Advisory Committee will be established, including representation from members representing the external community, Regional Council liaison, and municipal staff. The ANS Community Advisory Committee Initiative is stemming from the anti-black racism strategy. We will recommend that the committee report to council through the executive committee, fashioned after the Women's Advisory Committee. The ANS Community Advisory Committee Terms of reference are anticipated to be brought to Regional Council in the spring of 2021 for consideration and decision. In relation to addressing food insecurity, HRM is committed to partnering with the Halifax Food Policy Alliance to develop Just Food, an action plan for the Halifax region. Just Food is a collaborative effort towards actions to increase food security and strengthen our local food system through the lens of food justice. A draft framework has been developed, and public engagement will begin in 2021 to consider what food justice means to people in the communities they serve, to test draft food system goals, and move together towards action. These engagement results in ongoing research will form a draft action plan. Additional municipal food security initiatives include the continued partnership and support of the mobile food market, continued support for emergency food distribution and evaluation of food experiences during COVID-19, support for community gardens and Common Roots Urban Farm, food literacy programs offered by the Halifax Public Libraries, and support for various other programs and organizations, including Square Roots and Hope Blooms. Through the redesign of community grants, municipality will streamline the community grants and nonprofit tax grant programs to make the application process easier and more inclusive. The redesign, which will include more transparent evaluation criteria, aims to attract more people, in groups, better target areas where funding is needed, as well as provide a consistent process and approach for all requests. Under its Democratic Society Initiative, the library will provide equal access to a broad range of information and ideas, foster dialogue and issues important to our community, and provide a common ground to learn from each other's perspectives. Our Affordable Communities Initiative acknowledges that the provision of housing is paramount to the success of municipality, as it is an economic driver and a critical asset for attracting talent and business. Success in provision of housing requires adequate supply to meet demand, ensure that the supply is available in locations that will not create cost or environmental barriers to its provision. The regional plan, this fellow, where housing will be permitted and where, while local area plans, will speak to the form of the housing. HRM's role is to ensure there are no policy barriers to the provision of housing supply. Policy will include opportunities for market, mixed market, below-market, and deep affordability housing. Slide 11, please. Under Integrated Mobility, there's only one minor change noted in red on this slide from what we presented in December. The priority outcome is to offer safe, sustainable, and accessible travel options to move conveniently throughout the region. Slide 12, please. Some of our current planned initiatives within connected and healthy long-range mobility planning priority outcome include integrated land use planning. And the Integrated Mobility Plan, or the IMP, identifies integrated planning as well as land use and transportation as foundational policies. The objective is to integrate the planning of the transportation network with community design to better facilitate active transportation and transit use through compact mixed-use development, which can support sustainable and affordable housing. This initiative aligns with and supports strategic infrastructure investments under the Strategic Priority Outcome Holistic Planning and in the Prosperous Economy Council Priority Area. A little bit about transportation demand management as well, which is one of the foundational policies in the IMP, and refers to a wide range of policies, programs, and services designed to improve the efficiency of transportation systems. Approaches will include education, marketing, outreach, as well as travel incentives and distance incentives to influence behaviors. Terms of external stakeholder integration, the IMP requires HRM to partner with external agencies and organizations such as the Province of Nova Scotia, Bridge Authority, the Port Authority, et cetera, named by few, to collaborate on projects to mitigate disruptions in the mobility network, expand educational programs, promote sustainable and healthy mobility, and monitor the joint success of initiatives. This helps, of course, to ensure the objectives of the IMP are incorporated into the planning and execution of projects within the municipality. When fully constructed, the All Ages and Abilities Regional Center Bicycle Network, commonly known as the AAA Bike Network, will represent approximately 50 kilometers of connected bicycle facilities. The network includes protected bike lanes, multi-use pathways, local street bikeways, and structures that connect where people live, to where they workshop, learn, access services, relax, and enjoy recreational activities. That network, supported financially by the federal and provincial governments and HRM, is intended to be completed by 2425. The Active Transportation Priorities Plan aims to establish safer and more connected walking and bicycle infrastructure across municipality, increase the number of people using active transportation modes, and improves infrastructure safety through facility design and education. The Integrated Mobility Land Acquisition Strategy provides an action plan for, the actual plan itself, the IMP, provides an action plan for short-term and long-term requirements for the transportation network. In order to plan a connected and reliable transportation system, strategic land acquisition is required, and this will, you know, this will secure sites for mobility projects in advance of the project itself being budgeted. Projects include the implementation of the major strategic multimodal corridors, the bus rapid transit, All Ages and Abilities Regional Center Bike Network, in the Active Transportation Priorities Plan. Slide 13, please. There are four strategic initiatives under the Affordable and Sustainable Integrated Mobility Network. First up are major strategic multimodal corridors. The IMP provides direction to identify strategic corridors that are keys to the regional traffic flow, good movement, and active transportation. The major strategic multimodal corridors that have identified, it will be incorporated with planned recapitalization projects as part of the capital budget. The Windsor Street Exchange redevelopment project involves a redesign of the intersection of Bedford Highway, Windsor Street Exchange, Windsor Street, I'm sorry, and Lady Hammond Road. Windsor Street Exchange is one of five access points to the Halifax Peninsula and is a bottleneck in the road network with 48,000 vehicles per day passing through this area. We intend to complete the construction of the Windsor Street Exchange in 2324. Reconfiguration of Windsor Street Exchange will have significant benefits for local traffic flow and freight movement. It will also reduce the amount of truck traffic in the downtown core, improve transit and active transportation connectivity, as well as help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. There are two key components of the rapid transit strategy: ferries and buses. As we know, ferries have linked Dartmouth and Halifax in the 1700s. Given the success of the existing ferry services, adding new ferry routes has been a popular idea for many years. The Rapid Transit Strategy approved in 2020 proposes three new ferry routes. The Rapid Transit Strategy approved in 2020 proposes three new ferry routes from three new terminals, No Cove, Larry Uteck, and Shannon Park. Our intention is to fund and commence the construction of No Cove Ferry Terminal within council's current mandate with completion in 2526. Bus Rapid Transit is an enhanced form of bus service that provides a fast, reliable, and convenient way to travel. It runs at a high frequency through the day and typically incorporates extensive transit priority measures to avoid traffic congestion during busy periods. The Rapid Transit Strategy describes a network of four bus lines that cover approximately 50 kilometers connecting Peninsula, Halifax, and downtown Dartmouth with developing suburbs on both sides of the harbor. During the coming four years, river planning and land assembly will occur with implementation likely commencing the second half of this decade. Some of our current and planned initiatives within the Safe and Accessible Integrated Mobility Priority Outcome include the Strategic Road Safety Plan. TPW, Transportation Public Works, will continue to lead and support the road safety plan implementation with the goal of reducing fatal and injury collisions. This includes collaboration with corporate communications for education and engagement with police for enforcement and the Province of Nova Scotia for regulations and infrastructure. Transportation capital assets renewal to ensure that our transportation capital assets are well-maintained and rehabilitated, municipal staff will work with council to articulate what a well-maintained transportation network means for the municipality. This will include defining levels of service for various transportation-related assets such as streets, sidewalks, and walkways. This process will help identify funding requirements to maintain existing assets. Slide 14, please. And of course, we will continue our leadership in climate action, climate change action, and environmental protection, both as an organization and as a region. Slide 15, please. Some of our current and planned initiatives within the Net Zero Emissions Priority Outcome include deep energy retrofits of municipal buildings. Energy and Environment will develop an energy roadmap for corporate buildings to plan retrofits that align with recapitalization requirements. Retrofits must achieve a 50% reduction in energy demand and include renewable energy solutions where possible and plans for resilience to climate impacts. The municipality will continue to work with the Province of Nova Scotia and other stakeholders on the net need for a net zero new construction standard in municipality. If, after one year, there are no signs of progress, we will consider developing a green building standard as an interim, but a less impactful measure. To achieve council's commitment to a target of net zero municipal operations by 2030, all new HRM buildings will be built to a net zero standard. In relation to Community retrofit renewals and resilience program, in order to incentivize energy retrofits of existing buildings community-wide, municipality will work with financial institutions, other levels of government, Nova Scotia Power, and other stakeholders to design and launch an incentive program that includes energy retrofits, renewable energy technologies, and climate resilience measures. To achieve Halifax targets for decarbonized transportation, municipality will implement its electric vehicle strategy. This includes considerations for public charging infrastructure, chargers and municipal facilities, and converting municipal fleet to electric vehicles, and will require key partnerships, funding, and incentives. It also involves collaboration with other levels of government, Nova Scotia Power, and the Integrated Mobility Plan team to plan and build transit and active transportation infrastructure needed to achieve the 2030 mode share targets in both the IMP and Halifax. In terms of decarbonizing public transit, Halifax Transit will initiate the conversion from a fully diesel-powered fleet to a zero-emission buses. This initially includes the procurement of electric buses and charging infrastructure, transit facility renovations, planning and routing, considerations of staff training. Again, this is a collaboration with the provincial and federal governments, Nova Scotia Power, and other public and private stakeholders. Slide 16, please. Some of our current and planned initiatives within the Protected and Sustainable Environment Priority Outcome include increasing the protection of health and health of valuable ecosystems. Municipality will implement actions in the Urban Forest Master Plan and Green Network Plan in response to their targets and desired outcomes, and implement pilot naturalization initiatives towards a future park naturalization strategy. This involves acquiring parkland strategically and strengthening partnerships in supporting this initiative. Municipality will also include natural assets in corporate asset management to create an inventory of natural assets to better understand and incorporate their value. As well, we will improve waste aversion and align HRM's solid waste strategy with Halifax to promote waste aversion through education and enforcement, focusing on municipal facilities, multi-residential buildings, and reduce the single-use plastics community-wide. Further, alignment of this strategy includes promoting the circular economy, reviewing the municipality's recycling program, and supporting the development and commissioning of new organics processing facility. Some of our current and planned initiatives within the Climate Resilience Priority Outcome include coastal and freshwater flood risk management, where we will protect people in infrastructure from coastal and freshwater flood risks through modeling, mapping flood risks under current and future climate conditions, incorporating green infrastructure solutions, updating policies, bylaws, codes, and design standards, stormwater management, education programs, and policies. Need to protect critical infrastructure against future climate and extreme weather impacts as well, and it is a priority. For the next four years, municipality will develop a framework with owners of critical infrastructure to conduct high level of risk and vulnerability assessments. As well, we will conduct these assessments of municipally-owned and operated critical infrastructure and prioritize the most vulnerable infrastructure for improvements. I think we're coming to the end here. Slide 17. So, Mr. Chair, this is a very ambitious strategy, you know, one that will make, will take teamwork, focus, discipline, and resolve by regional council, the CEO, and some staff, as well as our stakeholders throughout HRM. It is focused, aspirational, and reflective of the needs of others. Thank you for your time, and I and my executive team are happy to take any questions. Subcool.
Super. Thank you very much for that very comprehensive and informative presentation. So, we do have a few people who are looking to speak to this, and Counselor Kent, you're first on the list. Would you mind putting the motion on the floor, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to put the motion on the floor. I would move that the committee, excuse me, I think I caught, we have, Jacques, excuse me, approve the 2021/2025 Council Priorities Plan and direct the chief administrative officer the 2021/2022 business plans and budgets consistent with this plan.
Thank you. Can I have a seconder, please?
Seconded by Lisa.
Super, thank you. Go ahead, Becky.
Yes, thank you. So, again, some of this is probably going to be in relation to a reminder of the process, but for now, I think I'm interpreting this as this is our first crack at making sure that we're on the same page around the high-level stuff that we see as priorities. And that, something that, for me, that is glaringly either worth questioning at this stage, and it was referenced in some of our discussions earlier, I think by Counselor Cuddle, is, and I think it only was mentioned at the very, very end under TPW section, which is around safe streets, safety, sense of safety within the communities. Clearly, we have identified in our first page, council priorities are communities. I can say without question, the number-one thing that comes to me as a counselor in our few short months, but I've heard it for many, many years, but more than ever, is around street safety. I had, when I look at this, and I only see it sort of mentioned, and I know, I'm not sure that we're hitting the mark on what you did sort of address, although, yes, we want to end fatalities, we want to make sure that we have the least opportunity for that. When I talk about communities, I, or when I envision it or think about it, I think about ways that we not only can change that trajectory of catastrophic events, a sense of safety in that they can rely on this consistently happening and be able to walk and enjoy their communities consistently without fear of a huge event that may or may not be addressed in our priorities. So, what I want to do is reference, for instance, when we talk about the policing aspects around public safety, nowhere in there did I hear anything around safe street safety. And, you know, traffic calming within the municipality from a TPW perspective is only one element of creating safer streets. Clearly, and we've heard it many times, that residents need to talk to the police on that. Well, if we have to talk to the police on that, why are we not identifying this within our priorities as part of a strategic plan to make sure that we make improvements on this level? I do understand from some of the conversations earlier, and I look forward to opportunities to address it a little further around budget allocations, resources, to make sure that we have in place the money that we, our departments and our services are in need to help support the communities where they are at risk. And I think that risk word was missing in some of the presentation, and I'm not being dismissive of what was presented. I just think of the, when I hear from residents, they need an acknowledgement that what they're saying to us is, in fact, very real. And risk is, I think, more significant than ever, and I would just like to know if there's an, if there is, in fact, an understanding of that perspective from this high-level job, because I didn't hear it, and again, it's the number-one area. Now, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask that for now. I do have lots of others. I'm assuming there will be plenty of time in this budget process to ask some more. If we approve this, I guess the second part of this is, once we approve this motion, and if we haven't all had an opportunity to really flush into what our areas of priorities are from a local perspective that influenced this larger perspective, will we be able to do that? I'm assuming this one is just a get the process going kind of motion. So, I'll leave it there for now and let others ask some questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. DeBay.
Thanks very much. Going back to what I did say on this, and if you look at the strategic, what I did say about the Strategic Road Safety Plan was that TPW would lead, would continue to lead and support the Road Safety Plan implementation with the goal of reducing fatal and injury collisions, fatal or not, and that includes collaboration with corporate commerce, education, engagement, police for enforcement, and the Province of Nova Scotia regulation and infrastructure. I will say that, you know, Brad Angwes will speak with us in greater detail than I can, but we do have a very close working relationship. You know, we have a road safety committee here that's corporate in nature, that's led by TPW, that involves police, involves other stakeholders, that meets on a regular basis and addresses these things. Now, this is a high-level strategy, as I know you understand and appreciate. This is a high-level strategy. You know, the detailed budgets are going to be brought to you in the budget process, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation. So, you know, what I will do now, though, is ask Brad perhaps to weigh in here to provide a little more detail around what the strategy actually means in terms of road safety, and how this is just the strategic-level activity going forward. Is he there?
Yep. Yes, I am, Jacques, thank you. Yeah, basically, our response is led by council's guidance on the road safety strategy, which is, you know, every evolving into a planned status. Each year, we bring forward recommendations and details on three-pronged attack to this issue, which is enforcement, which is education, and which is engineering. I think Counselor Kent, I think the biggest change over the last two years is this awareness that's come through the election, that this is a, speeding in particular, is a serious issue that is extends throughout the municipality. I can say that the road safety plan in its first vision had put kind of, it had focused on fatalities and injuries, that's a fact, and that's how it was being driven. What is evolving, though, is council's desire to attack speeding and the overall dangers within the community faster, and so we're adapting to that. On the engineering front, as you know, these things take time. The primary measure is there, I think you're all aware of, in terms of the engineering fixes. Many of these involve street reconstructions in many cases when we're talking about major collectors and arterials, and of course, we are doubling each year. In fact, this year will probably more than double the amount of traffic calming we're getting to the streets. So, the engineering is ramping up, but it takes time. In terms of the education, the investment remains the same. What we've done there, recognizing that council wants to be more nimble and probably less invested in a singular campaign, but more about month-to-month, day-to-day type of education, I can tell you that corporate communications is evolving in that manner. We're not there yet, but we're getting there. In terms of enforcement, I can tell you that the RCMP, and I know this has been a big question for the new councillors coming forward, I want to stress, both the RCMP and HRP sit at the road safety committee table. They also, when they report their performance or their data through, it is representative of both of them, and so we do get a citywide representation of the data and the, you know, the fatalities and collisions that we're having. So, I just want to stress that point. So, we are growing together as a team. We're getting better. In terms of the, in terms of how council can help, because I think this is the thing that's the real revelation for staff, I think we're moving past the point where this is a broad-based issue that is readily accepted. I think what has to happen now is wherever councillors can, is bring the actual streets or the pinpoint areas in the district that are a concern and continue to bring them to our attention, because we're now at the point where we, at the end of the day, we have limited resources, that's a fact, and that will always continue. But what we want to do is make sure that we're applying them at all times to the areas of highest concern, and councillors really have the primary eye on the situation or in the best position to advise us most of the time. So, I would continue to encourage that detailed feedback to staff, that is most helpful. The broad base kind of revelation that this is a priority, that is accepted, we understand that. Now, it's about, let's get into the details, roll up our hands and roll up our sleeves, sorry, and start to make things happen and address the issues in a pinpoint manner. So, hopefully, that's helpful. Certainly, I can provide you much more offline in terms of what we're up to, but this will come back to you when each of us brings our business unit budget. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I'm wondering if Chief Consella has anything to add to that.
Hello, everyone, and through you, Chair of the committee. Mr. Angwes covered it off very well. He covered the education, the engineering, and the enforcement. You know, that is a constant that has to be maintained over time. I can just piggyback on what he said about our participation on the committee. We're very engaged collectively, not only with what's happening in the HRP jurisdiction, but beyond that, as we move into RCMP and the greater HRM. So, we're also, you know, bound by the rules and regulations of the province, which we're in constant discussion to say, how can we do things better? And we are regularly enforcing, you know, regularly, unfortunately, still finding stunt drivers, people over 50 kilometers an hour. So, I know the problems are beyond that, they're also in the smaller areas where we talked about, you know, road engineering and reduction possibilities. So, we'll continue to work with Mr. Angwes and his team and our partners to try to bring about the change that we're all looking for.
Okay. Thank you very much. We do have one other question from Counselor Kent, which is wondering if the RCMP are online, and I'm wondering if Chief Superintendent Gray is with us. Okay. I'm going to move along for now to Counselor Mancini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Jacques. You know, how exciting is it to listen to our strategic priorities, especially during a pandemic, a look we're looking to accomplish? It is truly exciting. Now, understand, though, we can't do any of this until that very first one we're successful with, which is economic growth. Glad to see the focus on the environment in our Halifax strategy. Our response to homelessness and affordable housing is amazing, which is not our mandate, but we still have to take that responsibility and do that. I think we do more than other municipalities, even those that have it as their. I think we do more than other municipalities, even those that have it as their mandate. And so there's so many things out in the strategy is important. But I want to go back to where Counselor Kent left off, because what I see missing in all this as a, it's not a high enough priority. It should be a priority of its own, which is our safety of our streets. It's amongst a lot of the stuff that was discussed, but really, it should be on its own. And I really like to see that added to the strategy, because it is a top priority for many of us. You know, I'm curious, we talked about enforcement and education and engineering and, you know, and from a policing perspective, yes, there's been a lot more enforcement done, especially since the early part of COVID-19, there wasn't very much going on. And we're now seeing those reports of stunting, people being pulled over and so on. But you know, to my colleagues here, understand, as we go into budget, and the police, HRP comes forward with their budget, and we cut that budget, guess what's the first thing that's going to be cut out of it? Our CROs and traffic enforcement. So be aware of that, colleagues. I just share that with you. That'll be the first place they cut. And I don't know if the chief wants to respond to that, but that'll be my guess. And so we have to make sure that as we go through budget, if traffic, safety, crosswalk, safety, all of this is important to us, that we make sure that we look at that police budget and be careful if we choose to cut it further than it is today. I do have a question for Mr. Dubay. Jacque, where are we with the Provincial Transportation Safety Act? We were anticipating that coming back in 2021. We were looking forward to things like, you know, radar, camera radar, and red light radar, red light cameras, and all those types of things, which is not popular by all, but I think it's an important piece of the puzzle. And also, any further discussion on us having the authority to reduce our speed limits rather than having to go to the province each time? Mr. Dubay?
Mr. Chair, Counselor, thanks for the question. We have, we have actually been working with the province now for some time and with, and across all the businesses. We were, through GRIA, we've been consulting across all the businesses, trying to provide input into the process for the amendments to the Traffic Safety Act. So those conversations are ongoing, where we are, you know, on the verge of, I believe, sharing with council some of the feedback that we're getting and some of the positions that we've got, some of the questions. On that point, I'll, on that, I'll ask Brad to, and if Johnson wants to weigh in as well, feel free, Paul. Go ahead, Brad.
Okay, thank you, Jacque. Essentially, we're preparing a memo. We have been reached out to by the Chair and Co-Chair of the Transportation Standing Committee to circulate a memo to council of the next round of input that we're providing to the province. That is due to the province on January 22nd. We are working with government relations staff to assemble that memo. It will likely be early next week. We'll distribute that to council for your information, so you can see the broad range and hopefully what you'll find to be an aggressive submission as to what we would like to see in the regulations. In terms of the regulations themselves, we have received no firm date of when we can expect them to come to fruition, which remains obviously a concern for us, as you have pointed out, some of the things we need. In terms of the 40-kilometer-an-hour zones, as you know, this is, this is a very, the current approach, which is a neighborhood-by-neighborhood approval by the province, is very, very cost-intensive and resource-intensive. That said, we have not laid up. I think, as you're aware, I think we have implemented another six communities to date this year. We have more set for next year. But please be sure that we continue to impress upon the province, and there may be some interest to delegate this ability to us to be able to set our residential default speed limit at 40 or potentially even lower. So we continue to push in that direction, but in the meantime, we're not stopping. We're continuing to plan the neighborhoods to bring forward, and we'll bring forward another set for council's consideration this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Mr. Chair, if I may, one follow-up, quick follow-up question. Thank you.
Would you mind coming back, Counselor Mancini? Great, thank you very much. Counselor Cuddle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you for that, for that presentation. You know, it is, it is quite impressive when we put all our collective ambitions together into one report, and just how daunting it will be. And obviously, living in these uncertain times right now, you know, I think it would help to have an opportunity to talk about priorities for, you know, what, you know, out of all of these things, what are the, what are the major priorities? What are the things that have some urgency around them that, you know, we can't afford to wait on? I just want to echo what Becky and Counselor, Counselor Kent and Counselor Mancini were saying around the road safety. That is definitely something that I, I think so many of us, particularly the new councillors, have come up very strongly on. And, you know, we also represent a lot of the rural, suburban and rural areas of the municipality. You know, another thing I would like to see, and even better understand, but see, is how the integration works between the province and the municipality around shared initiatives of street calming, traffic enforcement, and road safety. You know, I think what we really are asking for here is a new strategy. We need, we need a new, a whole new approach. Having a waitlist of 30 years for, you know, traffic calming, crosswalk, you know, road safety improvement measures is just, is just not acceptable. And I believe that's what I heard you say, Brad, that, you know, that has been, that has been acknowledged. So now it's really about how do we implement it in a way that's fair and equitable? And I just want to, you know, I've been interacting with HRM a lot about this over the last couple of weeks. And, you know, part of the approach really needs to come down, you know, really needs to factor in how people feel on their streets. And just because there hasn't been a major road incident, an accident, a pedestrian collision, doesn't mean that pedestrians aren't living in fear. And when they have to walk down the street in fear, or worried about their children, worried about accidents, you know, that, that's not okay. We want to create spaces where people feel consistently safe. And, and, you know, I think that really needs to be something that's highlighted. Just in terms of other things in the plan, the rural planning program underneath economic development, I'm not quite sure how the rural, I know it's looking at land use management and how it affects economic, culture, and social and environmental outcomes in our more rural areas. But I think that there's a real opportunity that we can seize on here with the whole back-to-the-neighborhood kind of rural revival scene that is happening right now in relation to COVID. And really thinking about how COVID is actually changing the way our cities work and function. I would say we'd be amiss if we didn't recognize that things are different, that we want to build back better. And it's, and when we build back better, I think it's perhaps looking at our economic strategy through some new lenses, because that economic piece is so, is so critical. And I really feel that there's untapped potential in many of our suburban and rural communities that, you know, just through kind of lack of, lack of a plan or lack of focus. And when we look at that tourism master plan, you know, really figuring out how we also, you know, marry that to our rural, our rural planning program, whatever that might be. The other piece is about, I don't know if it's, fits in underneath the community section, but public engagement. And I'm pretty sure I saw somewhere in the last, you know, few weeks, that somebody was working on a new public engagement strategy. And, you know, involved communities, that, that piece really seems to be focused on recreation. There's a lot of recreation references in there. There is that reference to kind of a democratic society. But in the language in which it was described, I didn't feel it was strong enough to represent what we were saying when we were providing initial feedback to our strategic priorities about looking to find ways to better engage stakeholders, develop partnerships, and empower, and really empower communities to be part of the solutions within our municipality. So I don't know if that's just a descriptor issue, whether it's a strategy issue, but I, it's one piece I feel that still could be, you know, more strongly emphasized. And...
If I might interrupt, we are at five minutes. If you are heading to a conclusion?
I am heading to a conclusion. I'll head to a conclusion. Rural transit strategy is another piece I didn't, I didn't see in there. And finally, around climate resilience, but the management of flood risk and kind of protection. I also think we need to add in there something about education and awareness, and really tie in land use in there. Those things don't cost a lot of money, but they're critically important to achieving those goals. So, sorry for going a little over time. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you very much. Would somebody from staff like to tackle the issues that have been mentioned there?
I guess I would suggest perhaps that Kelly Dente speak to the issue around the, around the planning pieces on the engagement side, and the rural transit strategy, perhaps Dave Riggi, and the environmental protection, that'd be back to Kelly.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Kelly Dente, I think you can hear me okay? Yes, okay, good. All right, yeah, no, I was, I was kind of listening to that as for more feedback rather than lots of questions. I mean, a lot of the work we do obviously is integrated among all those themes. So, yes, the rural planning is meant in this context to be kind of tactical, to get at some, some issues. But obviously, you know, when we get to doing the rural plan, we'll be looking at, you know, more holistic, community-based planning. Right now, we're talking about kind of, you know, making some corrections that haven't been made, for example, right? But looking at that from a policy perspective, as well as from a, you know, a zoning or more immediate kind of land use perspective. So that's what we're trying to get at there, but also, you know, kind of collect and solve problems that I've gathered along the way. But to get at that, that broader piece, I think that the council was referencing, that that would come with the more broader scoped, you know, kind of, you know, rural plan, or even parts of the regional plan, that would fold in. And of course, the environmental pieces are, you know, a base to everything that we do, right? So that, again, becomes a lens through which everything is advanced in the future. So I think, you know, I think, like I say, I think just listening to what you're saying, yes, I think we have those answers, and I think it's in here. It's just not necessarily in the detail of the information that's before you. As well, community engagement, yes, we are working on a new community engagement strategy to update our old public participation program from 1997. So you should be seeing that in the coming months as well. And of course, we'll be adopting a lot of what we've done through COVID, right, relative to different forms of outreach as part of that. It's about identifying those tools, but also about how we reach out and connect with communities, right? And how we go about doing that. And it's not the traditional means that we used to. It's many different tactics based on the community that you're dealing with. So I don't know if that helps provide you with some answers on that, but I think, you know, that's what I have for that.
Thank you. And Mr. Riggi?
Good afternoon, Dave Riggi, Executive Director, Halifax Transit, through the Chair to Council. So in terms of rural transit, you know, the, the, the policy guidance that does come out of the regional plan in a few different ways. One is around the provision of express rural transit services, which most of those are up and running. And then Margeson Road is the, the one outstanding one in the regional plan that is yet to come. The regional plan also sets out in terms of an urban transit service boundary. So it provides guidelines in terms of where Halifax Transit-operated fixed route services go and where they don't serve, and where the, you know, the tax, there's, there's no payment of local transit tax in those areas that we don't go. And then the, the, the service solution for those areas outside the urban transit service boundary is our rural transit funding program, where we do fund third parties to actually provide those rural transit services outside of the transit service boundary. So those are all existing programs, so we haven't, you know, there's not a new strategy per se. At this time, coming out of this strategy, I think if there were as a desire on council to, to look at those approaches, the regional plan review would be the next opportunity to, to look at those various policies which guide and, and lay out how rural transit is delivered.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Dagel Gammon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That last comment just derailed my thought processes for a minute there, because rural transit, of course, is a big issue in District 1. And sometimes, you know, saying that it goes to a third party is an inadequate response to our residents in that they don't want it to have to be going down to a cooperative or a social enterprise, but they would like it to be part of what is readily available in the rest of HRM. So, so, yes, I'll still keep watching for the transit boundary and how that can be expanded. A few points rather quickly. One is just, there's a couple of places in that presentation, which was, by the way, awesome, where it says Halifax, and I wonder if it's Halifax or at times should it just be HRM? Again, because some people look at Halifax and think just the peninsula. So I'm wondering if that's one thing. I echo fellow councillors on the concern around street safety. And even if it was a standalone priority, I would fully support that. Within the Safe Communities part, it talks about the police report and HRP's response in some ways to Safe Communities. And because we do have an agreement with the RCMP, I wonder if that either is time for it to be reviewed, but if it should be referenced in terms of the Safe Communities under the police response, about what that agreement is, and how long it is for, and then how is it evaluated for its satisfaction, or it's, how well it's performing. There is an urban search and rescue program, the federal heavy urban search and rescue program that I'm, I'm saying I don't know a whole bunch about. But I do know that we've got some excellent volunteer search and rescue programs that operate. And I would like to understand better what that might mean. And especially if there's a new strategy on how we engage with our search and rescue community right now. So that's something that I'm just wondering a little bit about. And then the other thing is we have border municipalities around our emergency response with fire service delivery. And so understanding, I know it says that we, it says some stations may be relocated, consolidated, replaced, once they become too costly to maintain and don't meet functional requirements. And again, it's more about if this becomes a priority, and that is the beginning sentence, and I wonder about how consultative we are, how we understand the community's response to whether it's a functional requirement and, and all of those kinds of things. So I have a few questions about that on search and rescue. And then on the rural economic development, wherever we can have input as councillors, I'm in. Rural economic development in HRM is absolutely something that needs attention and beautiful to see it as a priority. Thank you very much. I think that was my list.
Okay, thank you. And then when you said you did have some questions, would you like to mention them now or would that be an offline discussion a little bit later?
I think the only question may be just on the incorporating where the agreement under Safe Communities with the RCMP, if that should reside in a comment under the Safe Communities.
Okay. Thank you. Can we have someone from staff address that, please? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that question. And obviously, RSA P plays a big, plays an important part in policing in HRM. We don't, it's not part of our corporate strategy to the extent that the contract with the RSA P and the province, we're a beneficiary of that contract. In other words, they provide policing, and it's a little different arrangement, because it's not a business unit of HRM. But I take your point, and I, and I think probably Dan and I would probably should have a conversation with Chief Superintendent Janice Gray to see what might, we might be able to include going forward in terms of strategy around including, including the RCMP in our strategy in some fashion, right? They do report up through the, or police commissioners, but in a different way than, than HRP does effectively. So we'll have that conversation.
Thank you very much. Counselor Lovelace?
Thank you. I'm really pleased to see the changes that have been incorporated. I feel as though staff have listened to us and have thought quite deeply about ways to make this really an outstanding strategic priorities document that will help us move forward. And I think on that note, I just want to stress that I think by by now, staff are probably well aware of the fact that this council, unlike previous councils, will be expecting more, right? We want more information, we want more details, we want more involvement, more communication. We want to ensure that there are more progressive solutions moving forward. And at the same time, I I think it's it's quite fair to say that this council also would like to see more involvement from residents and from businesses and more engagement. And so just picking up with what Counselor Cuddles said, you know, that that new community consultation approach, that involvement approach is is just so important. And, you know, when I think about the road safety initiatives, I do want to just echo Counselor Becky, Counselor Kent, you know, we desperately need to see this. It is the biggest priority that 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 I, you know, experienced in speaking with folks as I was on the doorsteps over the summer. But in addition to road safety, you know, the kind of lip lipstick on a peg approach of fixing Hammond's Plains Road was lovely, and we have paved shoulders and, you know, an active transportation lane, which is great. But the actual problem hasn't been addressed, the problem of congestion. And so, you know, I'm sitting here wondering, where is that functional plan? Where is the big picture thinking that will help us alleviate, you know, what used to be a horse trail? It was a it was a carriage trail up until the 1950s. And finally, when it was paved, we certainly saw a lot more traffic coming onto that. And 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 the community has just exploded, and it continues to explode residential and hopefully soon more commercial traffic as well. If we can stop treating Hammond's Plains Road as that sole major collector route and begin to address the needs of pushing off, right, and having those parallel roads, sorry, those perpendicular roads and parallel roads to Hammond's Plains, we have more of a grid. And so I Brad, I'm just wondering if you can speak to that need to actually create a functional plan similar to what we did with with Bedford Highway, right? And 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 looking at ways to actually enhance the overall community and the health of the community by not having two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon of back-to-back traffic. And, you know, just like if you're walking on Hammond's Plains Road, the last thing you want to do is be breathing in all of that, you know, congested traffic and and so on. So, you know, I just wonder, Brad, if you can speak to that.
Mr. Anquish?
So the quick answer is no, I can't because that's not my responsibility area. But it's okay. Sorry about it. Kelly's jumping in here. Just quickly, the 101 again, I remember I may have remembered when we did our introductions, I said every transportation planning, strategic transportation planning is in in planning and development, and it's 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 working well. So Kelly's on, and I'll be quiet. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Hi, Kelly.
Hi, Counselor. Thank you. Yeah, so we have, I think you've asked for a report on community connectors. So that's that's one piece that would kind of fold into Hammond's Plains as well. All right, so there's that. But yeah, the Hammond's Plains Road's been identified as an issue going back to the 2006 regional plan. What I can tell you is there's no quick fix. You know, Highway 113 is intended to provide a little bit of relief, but obviously, that's a provincial project, right? So there's not an immediate kind of functional plan tweak that that comes into play here. So, you know, if I can suggest, I think it's something that probably we should take back and discuss, you know, separate from this and and figure out what what possible solutions might look like, you know? Beaver Bank Road's another one in the same category. And as a result of that, you know, we have we've controlled development in those areas for that reason. We're saying no more, not now, until there's a way out of this, right? So, yeah, and I don't I don't necessarily have, or I don't think staff necessarily has an identifiable solution right now.
Okay, well, and and I do, I guess I can appreciate that. But just thinking about, you know, the schedule of J we have within the regional plan, right? And the fact that we've limited the the growth of roads, which means that we have no other choice but to keep the congestion on the Hammond's Plains Road. So I almost feel like we're working against ourselves in that. And certainly, you know, creating those hotspots for growth within the regional plan, Upper Tantown being one of them, you know, Highway 113 is not really going to help the Hammond's Plains Road, whether it's built or it isn't built, certainly going to help Subshore, Bridgewater, Hubbard's and so on, get to the airport of Dartmouth quicker. But, you know, I do think that we we just need to have that bigger, broader approach. I look forward to sitting down with you and and your team and determining what that functional plan actually could look like. And I do think we just need to be very creative about it so we can move forward. And I think my time's up.
Yeah, your time was up just a few minutes or a minute ago. So thank you very much. If you'd like to come back, feel free to let me know. Counselor Outfit?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And I want to start by saying I agree with the comments of folks that have said how exciting and encouraging this plan is and how I believe staff have listened to us. So that's the that's the good part. I also want to start off by saying how strongly I support Becky and Patty and Pam and others' comments regarding the road safety and Tony's comments on the policing. I am very worried that when we start talking about cutting police budgets, and of course, there's no, you can look at new ways of delivering certain things like health and wellness and health checks and those sort of things. But I am very worried when we start receiving pressure to cut the police budget, and I believe we will, that the first things that are going to happen is exactly what he says, is traffic enforcement, is community response officers, is school officers, which we no longer have, which is traffic monitoring, which isn't sufficient now. And of course, we don't even have as many CROs as we used to have. So we are, we're going to be dealing with a tough situation because enforcement, as Brad said, is certainly one of those three E's. We had a situation in West Bedford only yesterday where a child was hit on the way to school. And of course, that gets all of us upset, parents and and police and traffic folks and myself and everybody's school. I've heard from everybody, and I'm not sure that we can ever do enough of those three E's to ever, you know, say we're never going to have another accident or another incident. But we have to keep trying, and we have to keep moving the we have to keep moving the needle. So I've got a couple of questions here. The first one, I'll give them, I'll put them out at once here, and then folks and staff can respond. The first one was probably out of Jacque or Jane regarding commercial taxes. And we have passed the strategy that we will be gradual, having a gradual over three-year period increase to commercial tax rate, tax bills. I'm wondering if that will be in place for this year because while we are looking at approximately, you know, so far, a 1.9% tax increase, which I think the average home is around $38, we're talking that to the average commercial already, that's over $800. So I'm wondering if we're going to be in a position this year to start gradually implementing those increases to the commercial taxpayer? And B, are we factoring that into the budget, that we won't have all that revenue coming in from the increase if we are implementing it gradually? The second round of questions I'm going to have is more for for Brad. And Brad, I'm going to start off by saying, you know, I was chair and then vice chair of Transportation Standing Committee, that you and Tasso and Jill and Andy and everybody have been great to to work with, that we've made a lot of progress. There's still a lot to be done. And I know we've had some challenges dealing with the province, but I think we've made some progress. And I'd be very interested in seeing what you're going to be presenting to the to the province. I am very much a strong believer in the default 40-kilometer residential speed limit and not this foolish neighborhood by neighborhood and putting up 20, 30, 40 signs that we've had to go through to do some areas. I do believe that we should be changing the colors on the crosswalk signs and things like that to attract more attention to them. And of course, we are hoping that the regs, the new regulations for the new Traffic Safety Act will allow us to do things like regulate signs, the sound rather, which my colleagues who are new here probably haven't been through that yet. But over the summer, your phone will ring off the hook regarding noisy cars and noisy motorcycles. And of course, as Brad mentioned, photo radar and perhaps red light cam is another thing that will be allowed in the regs. So my question, starting off, and I will start off with, or Brad, if you could respond after Jane does, is I'd like to get an understanding of what we're asking for from the province. The other thing I want to do, and this will come as no surprise to anybody around the table, is that I'm very, very concerned about that list of 300 streets that have been approved for street calming and another 180 are about ready to be evaluated. It is embarrassing, and it is ridiculous when somebody calls me, be it my street, where we're 97th on the list, Starboard, which is in the 30s, a street yesterday involved in an incident that's 251st on the list, to tell them that they really can't expect any engineering solutions, if you will, for the next 5, 10, 15, 20, whatever years. Now, we can complain about this, and we can say there ought to be a law, and there ought to be a way, and we ought to do something about this. Or we can get serious over the next few weeks and find money to put into this. And there's two ways of finding money. One is by raising taxes, which I'm not a huge fan of. And the other is to find money in other programs and to take a one, two, three-year approach and try to put a dent in these in this list. And we may also have to get to the stage where maybe if they're above 50 on the list or they they're not in the top 100 of ranking, that maybe we just have to be tough and tell them, sorry, I don't think you are going to see speed bumps or chicanes. There's no, there's nothing worse than telling somebody, calling somebody who's just had a car broke by them or had their child injured or had an incident on the way home from work and say, yep, you're on the list. Hopefully, 10 to 20 years, we'll be able to do something for you. So Brad, I want to know where we are with a plan coming forward to try and knock off some of these 300s a little faster, over a two- to five-year period, perhaps, and what it would cost and what we would have to do. And I also, I'm trying, sorry, and I'm I'm trying to also, just for Brad, to find out, you mentioned to come and talk to you about and to talk to staff about pinch points, etc. Well, when we do that and we find out there's still 30, 40, 50, 250th position on the list, I really don't know what you mean and how we can accomplish that if simply it's not staff's fault, we don't give them enough money to attach that list. So those are my questions for Jane and Brad. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Over to Jane and Brad.
I don't know if Jane, I'm up, so I'll go. Look, I think, going to try to do this quickly as possible, not to belabor this conversation too long because there's a lot that could be discussed. Simply put, the AO for traffic calming is not working. We've got a policy position from council. We need a priority position. So it's not going to work. Just to give you a snapshot of why, there's 20, as per the current definition in the AO, which is 40-kilometer-an-hour threshold, there would be 2,900 eligible streets in HRM for traffic calming. So the AO was kind of designed with the priority list in mind. The problem is now that we're attacking this on a recapitalization rate of speed, what you're seeing now is lower priority streets up for recapitalization and getting traffic calming and taking the resources from streets in higher needs. That's a problem, and that's going to continue to be a problem. The other issue that exists is parallel streets. Anyone who has had traffic calming put in, as we've always said, traffic is like water. We'll put lumps on one street, and they'll just head down the next street. So we did not eliminate the problem in your neighborhood, we maybe made it worse. We are trying to take holistic planning to change that, to look left and right when implementing traffic calming to try and avoid that. However, you can't just remove it from a community altogether. It will continue to exist in some form. So bottom line, I have reached out to the Chair of Transportation Standing Committee and given my and spoke with the CAO about the need to come back with a review of the AO. Because what is becoming very clear is we're not getting, the limited resources aren't getting to the top priorities, and we have to find a better way of doing that. And for now, that's why I'm really encouraging dialogue between counselors and staff so we can really, you know, I'm not trying to make your jobs tougher, I'm just trying to get a better sense of where the AO is not working for us and how we can get to the priorities faster. Because the truth of it is, we ran the numbers to do to, and to, first, let's assume that we all think that 2,900 streets with lumps on is probably not the best way to run our city, especially from emergency services and transit point of view. That said, that said, if we were to do all that, which the current AO says, at the current rate of speed, it would take about 200 years. At the current cost, it would take about 130, 140 million. So that just underscores the point that what I'm hearing from counselors, we're not getting to the priority areas fast enough. The AO is not going to be the simplistic guide from council to staff. We're going to have to work with you to get to the priorities faster. This is the realization. Now we have to mobilize to do it. And so we're going to start with a policy review, but but I want to be clear, in the meantime, that does not preclude discussions between counselors and staff to understand where those hot points are in your community. Hopefully, this is helpful.
All right. Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to to the Deputy Mayor. So your question's on taxation. So as part of the fiscal sustainability strategy we did in December, we did talk about the need to look at at tax, at tax policy competitiveness and the mix between commercial and residential and and how that falls. So that that is definitely on on the radar. We do have an outstanding motion from regional council, as you said, to look at three-year tax averaging, assessment averaging for commercial and as well as the small business tiered tax rate. And then that was expanded to include geographic area. We are not recommending moving forward with those in this fiscal year in 2122. The reason being is we do not have the tax system to allow us to do the work. So currently, with the business transformation under SAP, we are implementing a new tax system. We had been talking to PBSC when this this work was originally done, and we had thought at that time, PBSC could do some of that work for us through other conversations with them. They are also going through a software review. So so long and short is it's better to wait. We are anticipating that the tax revenue model will be in late, early 2020, so February 2022. On the commercial averaging, so that's where in order to to smooth things in the tax averaging, really, we want to wait and see what the impact of COVID is on on assessment rates. What we don't want to do is take the three years of pretty high and average those and have the number be higher than it actually would be through through that. So so it's definitely on the radar. The report actually is written, so it'll probably be coming in to regional council in March. Just was really mindful of commercial taxation changes, budget, and all the moving parts that that were there. So I hope that answers your question.
No, I appreciate this update makes sense, and and I thank you, and Brad. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Counselor Morris?
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to say I'm also very impressed with the strategy and the approach that's been taken. And I would like to echo the counselor's concerns about road safety and pedestrian safety. And I look forward to the future debates on how best we can we can improve the situation through the budget process. My my question, I think, is for the CAO and is a little different. I'm wondering if we could make it a little more explicit. It may be obvious to the returning counselors, but I I'm wondering if we could state the assumptions, the growth assumptions that we have for HRM in terms of population, because so much of the planning and so much of what is done for the community depends on on how fast we grow and and on our population. So I'm just wondering if we could make that a little more explicit somehow, and if we could also then attach some high-level targets for housing related to the population growth that we anticipate.
Thank you. Mr. Debate?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Counselor, absolutely. What you're going to see in the in the presentation around fiscal tomorrow on many of those assumptions. So you'll see a bunch of assumptions in the fiscal framework tomorrow. And we normally put them in there as opposed to the the strategic planning document itself because it really comes down to the economy and the growth patterns that drive the economy and our revenue basis and all that. So you'll see a lot of that on there. I'm not sure if that would be satisfactory. You'd like us to explain? I'm not sure if that would be satisfactory, you'd like us to expand more on that?
No, that sounds good. I, I think, you know, I've heard different things in conversations that we're going to have a population of half a million by 2030, but I, I think people have different assumptions. So if, if we could have an agreed-upon statement of facts kind of idea, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, we've modeled, you'll see in Jane's presentation tomorrow, that we've, we have our own focus internally, but we also engage can mac economics locally to do some modeling for us on population growth. And we are on track to hit a half a million people within the, within the next four or five years. So you'll see those numbers and those assumptions in there.
Great, thank you, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you staff for this. I, I, I'm in general agreement with it. I just wanted to draw attention to two things, one being police reform. In the, this is something, of course, that last council was on the receiving end right after George Floyd's murder. I mean, the outpouring from the public was massive, and from folks that don't typically write us. There's very few issues, in my four years anyway, that generated so much correspondence. And so I think it's not explicitly spelled out in our strategic plan, but that is, to me, going to be one of our key challenges over the next four years, is looking at leasing as a model, and I think all of us on council, just thinking back to some of the questionnaires that went around during the election period, I think most people have a pretty nuanced view and understanding that it's not going to be something that is just you slash the police budget and you're done. It's much more complex than that. So councillor Mason's motion is still outstanding, but I, I mean, I think that's one piece that doesn't quite stand out as much in our priorities plan as it probably should, given the, given the, the attention on it. The second one, and, you know, maybe I'm being just wordsmithing here, but, and my apologies to staff, I'm going, I'm going to do that council thing where you showed us something a week, last time, and then we voted on it, but then on second look. So if we look at our council priority area for the environment, that is specifically the net zero emissions category, where we have strive to achieve net zero municipal operations by 2030. And of course, this is coming out of Halifax. The big crisis, it's, COVID will pass. I mean, we have a crisis now in COVID, we have an economic impact of that that kind of linger for years here. But the big crisis of them all is the one that threatens our civilization as a whole on this planet, and it's climate change, and the science is absolutely clear. So it, I'm glad to see it emphasized. But the thing that I, that I don't like is, if you read the net zero emissions, every other piece in our strategic priorities plan, it, it doesn't have, doesn't have kind of a little, strive almost diminishes it a little bit to me. Try to say, well, we're going to try and do this. Every other heading is healthy and protect the ecosystem, communities, infrastructure. If you go through them all, none of the other ones have that kind of qualifier in front of them. And to me, if we fall flat on our face in trying to deliver this, we do. It's not something that is or isn't. So I'm wondering if it's too late to just eliminate strive to and just have achieved net zero municipal operations by 2030. I don't think we should be qualifying it. I think we, it's, it's in our plan, it shouldn't be in our plan to just do.
Thank you, Mr. Debe.
Yeah, I was kind of waiting on this after I speak, but I think the, what I, what I mentioned in my comments is that we, or was implicit in my comments, is the fact that we don't, we are not in total control of this agenda. We have many, many stakeholders that have to play their role in the community, whether it's businesses, residents, et cetera, et cetera. What we are committed to is net zero in our, in our, in our fleet, in our net zero in our buildings, in our new builds. So it'll take a significant amount of investment to do that. So we're committed on our side to do our part, which is related to fleet. You know, Dave, reading his team over there, you know, again, subject to federal provincial approvals and council's desire, we have a plan to electrify our fleet by the end of this decade. Not all of them take money, you know, a lot, but we, we can certainly, that's our, that's our ambition, is to do that. And it's also our mission to make our buildings net zero. I made that, I think, quite clear in my commentary. The rest of it, the rest of it, where we strive to do things, is, it's in recognition of the fact that we're not in total control of the agenda here in terms of who does what in the community, in the private sector, in the academic sector, in the upper private sector, and all those properties and, and other fleets that exist. Kelly?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Debe, that's, that's accurate. I mean, the other, the other modifier around strive was simply to recognize investments that we've already made, right? So to suggest that we would, you know, we've got to, you know, we've got to recognize that we already have a certain component of fleet or buildings or what have you that are going to contribute to emissions, and how much control, how much success we have in getting to net zero in the next 10 years, you know, we're not 100% sure of. So it was simply intended to provide a little bit of wiggle room for investments that have already been made, right? So, and, and that's all there is to it, to be quite honest, so.
I would, I would agree, if I may, I would prefer that we eliminate the wiggle room from the piece that we actually have direct control over. Could we not just make that one, achieve net zero municipal operations by 2030, and strive to, to the second part there, where we're talking about the community piece, where you, where you folks are right. I mean, we're not in control of whether the province delivers up regulations that we need, if some of our big institutions and corporate, corporates.
Councillor Austin, if I, Sam, if I may, you have past five minutes. If you're looking to make an amendment to what we see in front of us, I would support that. But otherwise, if you'd like to continue, then I would invite you to come back.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. councillor Purdy.
Thank you, thank you. I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I just also want to echo the comments of my colleagues regarding street safety, pedestrian safety. This was the number one fear and concern of my constituents during the campaign, and just as a representative of my district on regional council, this is top priority for, for people. Just the basics, the very, they, they want their kids to be safe playing in their front yards. They want to see police presence on the streets. They want to see enforcement of traffic on their streets to make it safer. And they want a higher priority for street calming measures. So I just wanted to just put that out there. Thank you so much for the strategic budget plan, it's, it's awesome, but I just needed to echo that, thank you.
Thank you, and I would echo that as well. It was by far the number one concern in my area by a factor of 10. And recognizing that the streets that we have on the list for traffic calming, it will take decades to get them done under the current model. So, Mr. Anguish, I really appreciate the recognition that some work needs to be done to improve the process, and to see how we are going on that. councillor Hensby.
Well, I make sure that the rural voice also gets heard in regards to the traffic safety. Even though I have the majority of my roads are done by the province, also, my communities want safer roadways in collaboration with the province. We recently did the paved shoulder in Mindville. It was an enormous success, and the community is very grateful and happy for it. Waiting to see the Greenway project from East Preston come to fruition. I know that my regional district centers of Muscat, Albert Harbour, and Porters Lake want to see sidewalk improvements in their village corridors to improve access and safe abilities for safe neighborhoods and communities. So active transportation, safe, safe roads, you know, paved shoulders, sidewalks are critical in, in certain areas in my district. And I want to make sure that we have an ability to advance those in collaboration with the province through this budget process.
Okay, thank you very much. Starting on the councillors for a second time, councillor Kent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you start my clock, can you tell me how long I have? Sorry, you're muted.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
But you can, but you can continue coming back.
Okay, so I have two quick questions that are going to preface something that I'm going to offer up as a suggestion or consideration. So, um, under the strategic initiatives for 2125, we see plan and bylaw simplification, center plan, and I think, Jacque, you said center plan only. Can you tell me what Plan B and approval and implementation is here? Just a quick answer, not the long-winded one. Sorry, I was, I was, my time.
That's, that would be a Kelly Dantley question, so we'll have to ask Kelly to wait in.
Uh, Package B is simply meant to be the remaining portion of the regional center. I think that's what you're, you're referencing, councillor, so there's Package A, Package B, so it's Package B.
All within the regional center plan?
Correct, correct.
So, and on the strategic initiatives around connected health and long-range mobility planning, all ages and abilities, regional center. Are we talking about the regional center, and what is that considered to be there?
That would be, yes, correct, the regional centers. The regional center is the Halifax Peninsula and Dartmouth inside the circumfrental highway.
Okay, thank you. So this very much leads me to the perception that certainly I have here, and no doubt my constituents have, around what we're suggesting to outline our priorities, of course, for the next five years. And it lends as well to councillor Dagle-Gamon's concern around the terminology on the front cover of this, which is Halifax. I, I'm going to take a page out of some of my Dartmouth councillors and, and start, reiterate that, that sense that there is more to HRM, to what is often referred to in a brand versus the reality of HRM, brand of Halifax, that there is so much more outside that center plan. And frankly, I don't see a lot of it here in this. Now, this is high level, this is, this is an opportunity for, for staff to bring, and Jacque, for you to bring it forward to us. I want to put my emphasis and put a point on the fact that if, if a, a formalized document is going to have language that the public are going to see and read, if we don't acknowledge the outside of the center plan, the regional center, we are losing, we are contributing, I think, to a lost faith in, in government and representation and government priorities. There, we have noted, we have noted here, and many councillors have recognized it in the past, and I'm, I'm just putting a point on it, like, planning and development, regional center. Connector roads and corridors have traditionally been centered around the, the commuting into the center core as opposed to within their own communities and transit.
I'm going to interrupt here, Becky. If you're heading towards a question, then that would be great.
Yes, the question is, can we look to some language that acknowledges and represents the areas outside of the urban and center plans area? No doubt, it's in there, no doubt it's in there, and I want to hear more about it. But I want to see language that tells the public it's in there, and tells the public that. And so I want to make sure that there's an opportunity in the future for some of that language to be just, yeah, a little more diverse across HRM. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And over to staffer response, if there is one at this point.
Thank you very much. I think if you listen closely to my remarks, I didn't use Halifax. I use HRM and municipality most of the time, so I apologize if the label on this presentation had Halifax on it. I missed that one, unfortunately. So I've been, I'm, I'm one of those people who don't necessarily, maybe when we use Halifax, we use it as a brand externally to HRM, right? That's the intention of that. So I've been, I've been one that I'm sure I drive communications people crazy in terms of, some of my use of language in terms of my presentations, because I know that from branding perspective, marketing perspective, Halifax is easier to use. And I get all that, but I'm, I'm with you, I understand what you're talking about. We're trying to make this, obviously, a municipality that represents rural, suburban, and urban interests here, right? And there's been no doubt that, you know, the, the growth patterns in HRM have been largely centered on the center, right? A lot of the growth, whether it's apartments, and, so a lot of our programs, a lot of our budget expenditures have been, have been directed towards the growth, right? That doesn't mean that others have not been, we have not made investments in rural areas or suburban areas either, right? So, but I think we can do a better job in communicating that and articulating how, how we actually try to support all 200 communities within HRM.
And I appreciate that. One of the things that I was noting when I saw the strategic priorities plan is that all of the photos that identify a location are from the regional center. There are no photos that identify a location that are external to that. So I appreciate the comments that more than the, the regional center is being considered. councillor Mancini.
Mr. Chair, I'm good, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. councillor Lovelace for a second time.
Uh, thank you, that was actually, that was my point. Where's the picture of Peggy's Cove, Queensland's Beach, you know, the, the beautiful, iconic eastern shore? So I'm, I'm really glad you raised that point, councillor Kent, because we need to stop thinking about Halifax as Halifax, and it's more than a peninsula. It is more than that downtown core, it's more than the big buildings. You know, we are stretching far and wide from, from Hubbard's to Ikem Seeke. So I want to just kind of stress that, you know, images matter, language matters, and ensure that, that we have that covered off. And in addition to that point, I just wanted to raise the point around Vision Zero. I know that TBW has talked a lot about Towards Zero, and maybe this is a question this time for you, Brad, but where are we at with the incorporation of Vision Zero within our road safety strategy? Thank you.
Yeah, in accordance with the, good question, in accordance with the road safety strategic framework, it was built around Vision Zero. Through the experience at the time, what we had learned from, and, and by the way, I had joined TBW after, so I just want to make sure I wasn't personally there for this. But the work is sound, I've enjoyed catching up with everyone. The, a lot of checking with other cities who had adopted the aggressive vision of purely zero were not having success, and in fact, were going backwards. They were, they were not, they were seeing increases in fatalities and injuries. One of the findings was that by setting a goal that is completely unattainable, that it, it doesn't create those steps necessary, those achievable steps necessary to get things going in the right direction. So at this point, the direction from council was to take it in bite-sized chunks, given that we were going in the opposite direction. Our, our injuries and fatalities were increasing. The goal was to set, let's get it reduced 20%. In fact, staff had recommended 15, council pushed it to 20. And they said, use data, get, get us going, reduce it 20% in five years and reset the goal. We're quickly approaching a point where it's probably worth, we'd probably need one year of data after COVID to probably discuss and reset that goal. Long-winded statement to say, this is all based in Vision Zero. And I think, from a person who has to manage a large team of staff towards a goal, making sure the goal is realistic and attainable and measurable is a key piece of this. And so I really appreciate the work council has done here. We got a lot of work to do to get to this goal of 20%, but the, the key thing I'm hearing from my staff is that they believe this is achievable, they're invested in it, and we know it's just the first of many steps. So bottom line, yes, we're following Vision Zero with a 20% goal. That's how the word "towards" got into this statement. Hope that makes sense.
That's awesome, thank you, I appreciate that. Just knowing that the traffic calming initiatives that we have, that are being installed on the streets, of course, are directing the behavior to other streets, causing more problems on those streets. So certainly, we just need that broader, bigger approach to addressing it, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
One of the things that I've found with 35 years working with computers is you never remove a bottleneck, you only ever move it. councillor Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just going back to the point I was making on the environment section, I would like to put an amendment forward, and it, I mean, I haven't really added any words to the thing, I've just changed the emphasis. I'd like to move that we amend that to the achieve net zero municipal operations by 2030 and strive for community-wide emissions reductions of 75% by 2030 and net zero by 2050.
Second, councillor Mason. Thank you, councillor Mason.
Thank you, colleagues. And so the point of this is that we shouldn't have wiggle on the part that we can control. We should be committed to that wholeheartedly in our strategic plan, and I appreciate Jacque's words that very much. And I appreciate Josh's words that very much, I think the bureaucracy gets it, but we should be clear on it. And I think the point about there being, you know, we bought things that are going to continue to burn oil probably for some time. There are facilities that we won't be able to, but I think we can still achieve net zero. It just means we have to work even harder in other places to potentially offset pollution in others. So this is pressing and imperative. It is the crisis of our times. We are an extremely wealthy society and one of the richest, most prosperous countries in the world. If we can't do our bit, then we as a species are screwed. So I think we, I would like to change that. It's a very tiny little thing, but I think the emphasis is important. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So on the amendment, Counselor Stoddard, please.
This is not a comment to the amendment. It's just a comment on the traffic concerns that were mentioned by my other colleagues. I just wanted to emphasize that in my particular district, we, I've had conversations.
Forgive me, but if this is on the main report, would you mind holding off until we manage the amendment and then we can go back to that comment?
Sure. Okay. Sorry about that.
Not a problem. Strictly on the amendment. I don't see any other speakers. Counselor Mason, would you? Counselor Mason, would you appreciate the opportunity to speak?
No, I think Sam said it all.
Beautiful. Okay. In that case, Counselor Cuddle.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure you weren't missing me there. Yeah, I'm just wondering, in aiming to achieve net zero by 2030, is there a report on what that will actually take, what that will actually cost, how many buildings that includes? Like, I'm just very curious about the scope of this. And and I, in no way to diminish the importance of achieving net zero municipal operations. I do believe we need to be very aggressive in our, in our green plan. But how many emissions will that actually reduce things by? At what cost within, if we aim to achieve that timeframe?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, through the counselor. If you, the short answer is in Halifax 2050. The actual reporting went to council, council endorsed that plan. All of that, all the metrics are in there. Kelly, Kelly and her team can answer specific questions here. I'm not sure if they have that at their fingertips right now, but I know that it's all in the report.
Thank you. Ms. Dentey.
I can just add on by saying it's, obviously, it would be a very long and costly list. And I don't know that I have that information available right now, but it's something that staff is working on compiling and trying to resource, obviously, throughout the organization. So let us, let us take that away and get back to you with that. But that kind of speaks to the intent of strive, simply because it's, you know, it's an unknown, it's an unknown large number right now that we don't necessarily have costed and have fully committed. However, you know, the amendment proposed certainly makes, makes complete sense from a staff perspective.
I mean, the only reason I ask this is because when I look at our investment, if our goal is to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, when, you know, what money we have to do that, what is, what is the most way to reduce the most emissions we can? And is that, you know, ensuring that we have our electric fleet in place? Is it dealing with land use issues? Is it, you know, coming up with a better rural transit strategy? So I'm just trying to understand, our goal here isn't just about buildings, it's about reducing emissions. And I want to make sure we reduce, we get the most bang for our buck in reducing the most emissions we possibly can.
And we do too, and that is being looked at. And if you, if you, the Halifax plan talks about where those emissions generate from. So there's obviously municipal operations and there's community wide operations. Buildings is certainly one of the largest generators of greenhouse gas emissions. So we recognize that that's the biggest area of investment, but it's not just that.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other speakers for the amendment. Counselor Austin, would you like to close?
I think it's all been said, Mr. Chair. I'm okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I am wondering if we can go to the clerk for a vote? Or Mr. Traves? I'm just curious, is that question in relation to the amendment? Or is that in response to?
Counselor Kent's question on the motion.
Okay. Thank you. In that case, Mr. Clerk, can we go to a vote on the amendment for changing the position of the word strive as noted by Counselor Austin?
Yes, this is to the amendment, starting with District Three, Counselor Kent.
Thank you. I'm in favor of this motion.
District Four, Counselor Purdy.
In favor.
Five, Counselor Austin.
In favor.
Six, Counselor Mancini.
In favor of the amendment.
Seven, Counselor Mason.
In favor.
Eight, Counselor Smith.
Four.
Nine, Counselor Cleary.
Yes.
Ten, Counselor Morse.
In favor.
District Eleven, Counselor Cuddle.
Can't find my thingy.
You are not muted. Go ahead, Patty.
Oh, I'm not muted. Oh, great. I was trying to mute myself. Yes, I'm in favor. Thank you.
Twelve, Counselor Stoddard.
In favor of the motion.
District Thirteen, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Counselor Blackburn.
Voting yes on the motion.
Fifteen, Counselor Russell.
In favor?
Sixteen, Deputy Mayor Outhit.
Yes.
District One, Counselor Dagle-Gamon.
Voting in favor of the amendment.
Two, Counselor Hensby.
Affirmative.
And Mayor Savage.
In favor.
And that has passed.
Super. Thank you very much. Counselor Kent, you were discussing a motion, and I'm wondering if you are prepared to move that forward? And you're muted. One of the catchphrases of 2020 and 21.
So I was just trying to respond to John's ask around specific priorities. I want to, so yes, I would like to put an amendment forward, and I was trying to address that, Kathy, to your question, putting it in the, in the chat room, but it's easier for me to speak to it. So I would like to make, ask for an amendment to include some, a bullet that is around priority planning strategies, inclusion of, language and inclusion of priority planning strategies in suburban and urban parts of HRM. That needs to be captured here in this timeframe. So that's one, and the language, I mean, there's better people than I to kind of form it into a motion. As well, the priorities related to the unique challenges related to being suburban and urban, sorry, suburban and rural environment. I do want to reference Counselor Mason. Thank you very much for the acknowledgement of what really that, that council motion was. Sorry, those are my babies behind me barking. Let me close the door.
Was that Hensby?
We've been heckled before, Becky. Not a problem.
Kent, you've just muted yourself.
Okay. How many times do I need to thank Counselor Mason? Thank you for putting up the motion to explain and give us better insight into what that branding and name change to Halifax means. And I guess one, I want to put in there, so people understand where I'm getting, that a quarter of the population may in fact be from the rural areas. However, if you did the geography of those rural areas, which is greatly impacted for transit decisions, transportation corridors, trails and active transportation, all of those are uniquely different from those considerations that you have within the city center, that that quarter and versus three quarters of the center area versus the rural is really, in my opinion, skewed. And so, and the other part of that is that, yeah, we're a new council, so we get to debate this again if we want to. So I guess I'm struggling a little bit with how to come up with the full extent of this motion. If anyone can chime in here, I'm happy to consider it. If not, will I have another opportunity? So I can leave this meeting and give this some more thought with some support from the clerk's office press.
Go ahead, John.
So, you know, the motion in front of council is to actually set these priority areas in which case staff would go away and build a budget and business plans, you know, based on the decision here. So short of deferring a decision, which, which would be a challenge, if it helps, Counselor, what I would point as just that one example, if you look at the actual priority areas as they're described, I think staff has been reasonably cautious to essentially, and I'm looking at the one under communities at the moment as an example on Slide 23, all of the language is writ large. It all refers to the municipality as an entirety. It in no way is intended to minimize or to underwrite anybody. So as an example of one of the four priority areas, the community starts off with a reference to the municipality both strong and equity. So based on your comments and staff taking that away, ensuring that as they're building, you know, the business plans, that I might suggest may be sufficient. Otherwise, we may get bogged down in trying, because you'll have to actually break out specifically what, what language and what changes you want to make in each of these particular areas. So, you know, to the extent we can, staff has crafted all of these priorities the same way, which is to write, write it extremely broadly to cover the entirety of municipality, if that's any assistance.
Okay. Yeah, actually, it was, because that was part of my first question was, do I actually need to put a motion on the floor to have an impact or an influence here? And so now I'm here, no, I definitely did not. On the flip side and on the good side, I still got to have a stay. So you're here, you're, I'm influencing you, and I'm hoping I'm helpful to the other counselors who are, also have areas of this outside of the center plan. And I don't mean to be the curmudgeon that has this, is putting up that, that deep divide between urban and rural and all of that. What I'm, what I'm really trying to do, and I'll, you know, for the record and for all of you, is that I'm representing my constituents, and that's important because I have a mixture of all of it. Thank you.
And that's the process for today. Staff is here to hear this feedback and to take that away and deal with it as it needs to be.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you very much. Thanks for your indulgence, counsel.
No problem. Thank you. Counselor Cuddle, there is no amendment on the floor. Becky, it looks like you're sharing your screen. And so at this point, we are actually back on the main motion. So Counselor Stoddard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just echoing the traffic concerns of my colleagues that mentioned earlier. I have same issues in District 12. I've had many conversations with parents whose children are at risk traveling to and from school. There is areas that we find there's speeding in school zones. Seniors aren't comfortable crossing some of the streets, and drivers are ignoring crosswalks. So I just wanted to put that out here, out there as a concern in my area as well.
I absolutely agree with that. We have some streets here where exactly that is happening and unmarked crosswalks that we aren't able to get crossing, cards at because they are unmarked. So thank you very much. Counselor Cuddle, would you like to speak again?
I would. There we go. Yay. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I just wanted to add a little bit to what Becky was saying. And, you know, one thing I think we need to recognize is that HRM is a massive municipality. It is the size of Prince Edward Island. It is an incredibly huge area to govern as a municipality that includes both a very urban, defined urban regional center, suburban areas and rural areas. And within those areas, there's different sets of priorities, different needs, different cultures, different lifestyles. So, you know, I appreciate the difficulty in for staff in trying to wrangle all of that. And, you know, and I, you know, goes back to the comment earlier about the rural planning program that I made in the beginning here. And I think in my research that, you know, one of the areas that's really managed to do well at governing a regional, a region would be Portland, Oregon. There's not many places have been successful in creating those, you know, finding the balance between both. So I do, I do recognize, and I do recognize staff's effort throughout the planning, throughout our council priorities. I do see a lot of rural pieces in there, but it's how we think about the municipality as a whole that I believe needs more discussion. So it's not just a little bit to the rural areas, but it's an entire way of thinking about how we plan and manage a region the size of HRM. So I'm just going to leave my, my comments there. But I do think that this is something that is going to continue to come up again and again and again unless, as a council and as a city, we find a better way to talk about it and to respond to it and to manage it.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I absolutely agree. Counselor Hensby.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I think that the biggest issue that we, as we go forward with our capital and operational budgets, I think that our staff are going to need to orientate the new counselors and some of the newbies like yourself, Mr., you've only been a year longer than the newly just elected ones. The philosophy, the strategy behind our various plans, you know, integrated mobility plan, the green network plan, the moving forward plan, you know, the regional, the regional plan amendments are coming forward in the next little while, these budgets got to show how those priorities, those plans are being forwarded in regards to how they're going to be realized. I think that as we go forward, we need to see that because some of our residents want to see what tangible services we're going to get. And if our budget process is going to get more service related, as we talked about trying to, instead of having a generic budget and stuff for capital departments and stuff, if we go onto a service based related taxation, hopefully, people will start realizing and seeing the benefit of their tax dollars. So I'm hoping that rural transportation be readdressed. Strategic parkland acquisitions be, 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 be important. The functional road network is going to be critical. Our regional plan talks about local district centers, be it Hubbard's, be it Muscat Harbor Harbor, be it Porter's Lake, be it East Preston, Sheet Harbor. We need to have support for those main street areas. So the streetscaping in those rural areas need to be discussed. So I'm hoping that as we move forward this budgeting process, the staff will make the connections for the new counselors, understand of what direction, why the budget's moving in this direction, because this is the first year before your mandate of this new council. And the new counselors want to put their imprint on this budget as well. And they also need to understand or have a better appreciation of why we're moving in this direction. And perhaps a reorientation, revisiting and rediscussion of our strategic plans may be necessary for everyone to refresh our memories and to see if we're still looking at the same, same vision as we did when they were adopted.
Okay. Thank you very much. We don't have any additional speakers on the strategic plan. So at this point, I would like to ask if anybody would like to call for the question?
Before, before we ask the question, could we ask the CAO, how does he envision to bring those connectivities of our budget plans with our strategic planning initiatives?
Thank you very much for the question, Mr. Chairman, the counselor. So during the orientation sessions, we briefed all counselors on those particular plans and provided all of them and encouraged them all to read those plans. The budgets, my business unit budgets, where those strategies impact the operations and future plans of business units, all of those are taken into consideration as we, as we put a budget together with certainty. So if there are any questions associated with those strategies that counselors have, whether you're a new counselor or an old counselor. whether you're a new counselor or an old counselor, we're more than happy to answer those questions. But certainly that information has been provided, and we're more than happy to provide any additional information. But you can be sure that the budget coming forward is respectful of all the strategies that have been adopted and are in place. And I would remind everyone that all those strategies are strategies, whether adopted by this council or prior council. They only cease to exist if the council actually retracts them, right? So they are what they are, and they are the guiding principles of our budgets going forward. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. And since there are no further speakers, Mr. Clerk, can we proceed with the vote?
Speaking to the motion, beginning in District 4, Counselor Purdy.
Voting yes.
Five, Counselor Austin.
You got the yes on Counselor Austin?
Yes.
Six, Counselor Mancini.
In favor of the motion.
Seven, Counselor Mason.
For the motion.
Eight, Counselor Smith.
Four.
District nine, Counselor Cleary.
Yes.
Ten, Counselor Morris.
In favor.
Eleven, Counselor Cuddell.
In favor.
Twelve, Counselor Stoddard.
In favor of the motion.
Thirteen, Counselor Lovelace.
In favor.
Fourteen, Counselor Blackburn.
voting yes on the motion.
District fifteen, Counselor Russell.
In favor.
Sixteen, Deputy Mayor Otis.
Yes.
One, Counselor Digglegamon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
District two, Counselor Hensby. Three, Counselor Kent.
In favor of the motion.
Mayor Savage.
In favor of the motion.
Thank you. And so the motion passes. Thank you very much, everybody. The next item on the agenda is the adjournment, and then we will be reconvening as Halifax Regional Council. We have it in the schedule to take a 15 to 20 minute break would now be an appropriate time for that.
Yes. Oh, I would suggest we'll come back at 10 to 4.
Okay, we will return at 10 to 4. To the Clerk, is that in this session, or do we return somewhere else?
No, that is, everybody could please return to this meeting you are currently in. So you can either stay in this one, or you can return to it when the break is over.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor Lovelace.
Okay, April, Ian, how we doing?
So currently, we are waiting on Counselor Austin and Counselor Kent.
I'm here.
Oh, never mind, Counselor Kent.
I don't think I need to do a roll call again, Ian. I think we'll just assume that everybody that was just there twice already will be there again. There's no statutory reason I need to do that.
Nothing statutory. Your call, sir.
All right, let's go.
Just need to affirm we got quorum.
We have quorum if everybody's here except one counselor, I think. Okay, we are back, and we have had two committees of the whole, one on budget, and we will be now beginning our council meeting. So I want to call the meeting to order. We do have quorum. I'm not going to go through everybody's name again. We've done that twice today. I'm just going to ask if there's anybody who's not here to please identify yourself. Good, all right. I will look then to the approval of the minutes of December the 15th.
I will move that, Counselor Russell.
Moved by Counselor Sackville. Seconded by Counselor Lovelace. I'm getting a kickback here of some kind. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Sir, I believe that word is feedback.
The order of business, there are some additions and deletions. You have a sheet. I'll go to our clerk, the distinguished Ian. Other additions, deletions, Ian?
So there are three added items. Item 14.1, Counselor Lovelace has an amendment to Schedule 6 of the St. Margaret's Village Administrative Order 2018-003, and then two ratification motions stemming from this morning's business, one, the Committee of the Whole review of report requests, and ratification of the Budget Committee meeting, January 12, 2021, 2021 to 2022, advance capital tender report.
Those who've added, they've been submitted and received and approved. Counselor Lovelace?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if I could please also request that item. I don't remember, I can't think of the number now. You don't have it in front of me. Halifax interim report, that confirmation item. Could we have that, please, at the next council meeting?
Yeah.
We didn't hear you.
But information item on Halifax brought forward for the next meeting, is that what you asked for?
Yes, please, that information report. I appreciate that.
So it's asked, so it should be done.
Info item number three.
Sorry?
That was info item number three.
Right. Halifax update. Counselor Mancini, did you wish to do something here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove an item from the consent agenda if I may. That is 11.1.6. I'd like to add to our agenda for discussion.
Were you going to defer that as well, did I see, Tony?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Mayor. So I suspect from a procedure point of view, I have to remove it from the consent agenda when it comes up, or can I do that right now? Doesn't matter to me, I'm not.
Oh, Ian?
Okay.
So Counselor Mancini is asking to, we'll get to the consent, just hold off on the consents, but because Counselor Mancini wants to take something off consent and defer it to the next meeting, that's item 11.1.6, which is the planning policy review of the Burnside Comprehensive Development District.
That's correct, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ian and John, we're okay to do that with the consent of council?
Unless there's an objection.
Any objection to that? Okay, that will be deferred till the next meeting, and it will not be on consent when it comes to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you colleagues.
Okay, anything else? Counselor Russell?
Thank you very much. I would like to remove item 11.2.2, the original watershed terms of reference from the consent agenda.
Okay, yeah, not really on the consent agenda yet, but I'll note that. Tony took his off consent specifically. We probably should do the consent before we do the approval of the order of business, but, okay. Counselor Morris, there was discussion you were going to do something of a deferral of nature?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's been an administrative issue that's come up with my building on Dunbrack Street, so I'd like to remove 11.4.1-02, case 22332.
That would be deferred for a supplemental report from staff, which we anticipate would come on the 26th.
Yes, on the 26th of January, back to council.
So Counselor Morris's proposal, we defer 11.4.1 coming out of Halifax and West, amendments to Halifax MPS Land Use Bylaw, Halifax mainland near Dunbrack, seconded by Counselor Mason. Everybody's okay with that? If there's no...
Mr. Mayor, it's Counselor Cleary. Can I just have some clarification why that is the case? Why it can't be dealt with today?
John, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, I can speak to that. My understanding is that the motion that's on the agenda is not the recommendation that came from Halifax and West Committee, and that if the intent is to consider what was recommended from Halifax and West, then staff will need to provide a supplemental piece to make sure that we can give effect to what was decided at the committee.
And this was just an oversight between that community council and today?
There was a, there's a mistake in the clerk's office that we didn't notice in terms of the recommendation that's on the, on the agenda, and also, I think at, at the committee, in all likelihood, it should have gone back to staff to ensure that, that what was being proposed by the committee is, is actually achievable, and so I'm told by Planning and Development, they'd like a bit of time to prepare supplemental staff to give effect to what the committee is recommending.
Okay.
Okay, is everybody okay with that happening, the deferral of that item 11.4.1 till next meeting? Hearing no objection, that's what we will do. Does somebody want to move the agenda as amended?
I will do that, Counselor Russell.
Counselor Russell.
Seconded, Tim.
By Counselor Deputy Mayor, all in, we have to do a vote, no, I guess we can just do yes or no on that one, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed, that's carried, so we have deferred.
John E. Trace would like to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we just said we deferred two items and added three. Counselor, so, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the benefit of the new members of council, just, you know, let people know that in terms of information items that are being brought forward for the next meeting, it still would require notice of motion if you intend to make a motion arising out of that report, so that there could be people that are willing to respond.
Okay. Okay, so the order is approved by vote. Consent agenda, Counselor Mancini has moved 11.1.6, and Counselor Russell has taken 11.2.2 off consent. Anybody else on the consent agenda? If not, does somebody want to move the consent agenda?
I'll move that.
Moved by Counselor Mancini, seconded by Counselor Mason, just to let people know what is on the consent agenda, 11.1.3 is the kindness meter agreement, 11.1.5, increase to contract environmental testing for the Halifax Commons Aquatic Project, 11.1.8, appointment of building official, 11.2.1, ecological lens, which comes out of Environment and Sustainability Standing Committee, those are, will be deemed to have passed by consent if it passes. Ready for the question, colleagues?
Question. Actually, I apologize, Mr. Mayor. Can we remove 11.1.3 from the consent agenda, please? The kindness meter, united way.
Okay. That is 11.1.5, 11.1.8, 11.2.1. We'll put a vote on that.
On the, on the consent agenda, beginning with District 5, Counselor Austin.
In favor.
Six, Counselor Mancini.
In favor.
Seven, Counselor Mason.
Four.
District Eight, Counselor Smith.
Four.
Nine, Counselor Cleary.
Yes.
Ten, Counselor Morse.
In favor.
Eleven, Counselor Cuddle.
Yes, I can't mute. I'm good. Oh, good, I'm good. Excellent.
District 12, Counselor Stoddard.
In favor of the motion.
Thirteen, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Counselor Blackburn.
Voting in favor of the motion.
District 15, Counselor Russell.
In favor.
Sixteen, Deputy Mayor O'Tit.
Yes.
District 1, Counselor Dagelgannon.
The motion.
Two, Counselor Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Counselor Kent.
In favor.
Four, Counselor Purdy.
In favor.
And Mayor Savage.
In favor, so that passes. We've passed 11.1.5, 11.1.8, 11.2.1 on consent. I've read them out. Calls for declaration of conflict of interest. Motions of rescission, none. Consideration of deferred business, none. We will have a public hearing in a couple of hours at 6:00 on the proposed Administrative Order respecting closure of a portion of St. Margaret's Bay Road. Correspondence, Mr. Clark?
No correspondence has been received for today's meeting.
Well, you attribute that to Christmas. Petitions, colleagues? Seeing no petitions, no presentations, no information. Items brought forward, reports from the CIO, 11.1.1. Second reading proposed bylaw and amendments respecting charges for the resolution of inadequate water supply and proposed amendments respecting license, permit, and processing fees. Counselor Hensby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that I have a few to council, adopt one by law C. 1002, amending by law C. 1000, respecting charges for the resolution of inadequate water supply, and set out an attachment to the staff report dated November 30, 2020, and to amending Administrative Order 15, the purpose of which is to replace the table in Section 25 with Administrative Order 15 respecting license, permit, processing fees, and set out an attachment for, of the staff report dated November 30, 2020.
Second for that?
Second.
Counselor?
By Lisa.
Second, Counselor Blackburn, thank you. Counselor Hensby, anything on it?
Thank you much, Mr. Mayor. I think we debated this earlier before in regards to what type of properties there should be included, but this has helped those with septic, onsite septic systems that need to be upgraded and replaced and stuff. So I think this would be a great move forward to help those properties that are not on central sewer services to help improve the properties for the safety of their environment and community.
Thank you. Counselor Russell?
Thank you very much. I was reading through this report and the, and the proposed changes to the bylaw, and came across some confusing wording, and part of the wording said, and we can see this in the report where it is in, I'm just bringing it up, in Section 8, where the amount of the charge, the amendments say we will loan someone either $20,000 or 75% of the assessed property value. The intent was loan them up to $20,000, or up to 75%, whichever one is less. And by the removal of Clause B in Section 8, it changes the meaning of it, so that even if someone needs $3,000, we will loan them $20,000. So with that, I would like to make an amendment that has been run through the legal staff, and I move to amend by law C. 1002, or I move that amending by law C. 1002, so that Section 11 is amended as follows. One, by striking out the word in Subclause 6, repealing Clause 8B, and two, by adding the following words to Subclause 6 to amend Clause 8B as follows. Amend Clause B by adding the words "and comma" or an onsite sewage disposal system after, in quotes, "after the word and comma equipment," and before the word "less," and striking out the period and adding a semicolon and the word "or" at the end of the clause. And I apologize for that sounding messy. What that effectively does is keeps the first clause there that says $20,000, changes the second clause, and I'm just going to look to the email conversation that I received earlier today, changes the second clause to say the actual cost of providing for financing installing water improvement equipment or onsite sewage disposal equipment, and a few other words, and the third clause is, or 75% of the assessed property value as determined by the Property Valuation Services Commission. And with that, it makes it clear that someone can borrow up to $20,000 or 75% of their house, but only as much as they need. So I would like to, thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Mason. Counselor Russell's explained that. Is there any other discussion on that? Ready for a vote on the, is it a friendly? I guess we need to vote on this, John?
Unless it's a friendly amendment by the mover and the secondary.
Okay.
I consider it as friendly, yes.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Russell, for picking up on that. Are we ready for the question on the amended motion? Okay, let's go on the amended motion.
To the amended motion, speaking to District 6, Counselor Mancini.
In favor of the amended motion.
Seven, Counselor Mason.
For the motion.
Eight, Counselor Smith.
Four.
District Nine, Counselor Cleary.
Yes.
Ten, Counselor Morse.
In favor.
District 11, Counselor Cuddle. Counselor Cuddle, we'll get somebody to fall with you on your microphone. Was that a thumbs up though that I saw? Thank you. District 12, Counselor Stoddard.
In favor of the motion.
Thirteen, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting yes. I also have a delay on my, on my mic.
District 14, Counselor Blackburn.
And voting in favor, thank you.
Fifteen, Counselor Russell.
In favor of the motion?
Sixteen, Deputy Mayor O'Tit.
Voting yes.
One, Counselor Dagelgannon.
Voting in favor of the motion as amended.
Two, Counselor Hensby.
Affirmative.
District Three, Counselor Kent.
In favor of the motion.
Four, Counselor Purdy.
In favor of the motion.
Five, Counselor Austin.
In favor.
And Mayor Savage.
In favor of the motion, so thank you, Counsel, Hensby, thank you, Counselor Russell. That passes. We will move to 11.1.2, colleagues, proposed amendment to Administrative Order respecting HRMs, grants, programs for active transportation and rec. Transportation and Rec Trails. Counselor Hensby has his name on this one.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Counselor Austin.
Don't we have to, I mean, wasn't that the vote on the amendment?
No, the amendment was considered friendly. So I said to vote on the amended motion.
Sorry, I missed that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hensby, 11.12.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Halifax Regional Council adopt the Amendment of Administrative Order 2020-011-80M respecting HRM Grant Program for Active Transportation and Recreational Trails as proposed the Amendments of Staff Report dated December 3, 2020.
Second?
I will second that. Counselor Russell.
Counselor Russell, Counselor Hensby?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Very pleased to see this report finally come forward, but there's something that I find a little odd in the language or lack thereof in regards to the potential of funding for motorized shared trails. So is there anyone in staff to clarify the report? Because the initial report back September 29/30 for the two-day council meeting back then talked about an opportunity, the ability to fund those multi-use shared trails that have motorized use. But through the language of the administrative bylaw, I truly have to struggle to find the word motorized vehicles. I see the non-motorized and stuff, but I don't see anything that reflects or talks or specifically makes reference to off-highway vehicles or motorized trails or shared trails. So can I have a clarification from staff? Is that this bylaw and the amendment being proposed will allow for the funding for motorized shared trails?
Mr. Mayor, David McKaisak here, Active Transportation Program Supervisor.
Hi, David. Go ahead, sir.
Through to the counselor, Counselor Hensby, this change doesn't impact that at all. The administrative order that we brought forward in September that this amends did not restrict funding for active transportation facilities that allow motorized uses, and this amendment doesn't impact that either.
So from reading this, it just found that it was begging the question of why was it so limited on not having the words of motorized use or shared use? Just kind of curious of why that is. But I thought we're amending the administrative order to include those, and I didn't see the inclusive language where I thought might be a little more explicit.
I mean, I'll just, just, all this really does, the intent of this is, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor, the intent of this is really just to make sure that those groups that have responsibility for both active transportation facilities and for recreational trails are able to apply for either program at the same time. And doesn't impact at all the eligibility of facilities, you know, like the St. Margaret's Bay area rails to trails or the BLT that do allow motorized uses to access HRM grant funding for AT facilities. They are eligible. Blueberry Run, Shearwater Flyer, they are all eligible.
Thank you very much for that clarification and confirmation. Thank you, appreciate it very much, and happy trails to everybody.
Thank you. Counselor Kent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Ms. Counselor Hensby, for raising that. That was one of my concerns as well. I am, I am excited to see that this is being corrected. I do have a question, though, around the, the point here. Trail organizations are not-for-profit, registered in HRM with the Registry of Joint Stock, some since 1986, mandated to represent the interests of the community at large as related to developing the AT network and recreation trails in HRM. I need clarification from staff if this would include the Friends of McNabb's Island Society, who have been instrumental in developing and working with partnerships from all levels of government to bring forward safe, enjoyable trails on this magnificent jewel that we have in the middle of harbor where they're often left behind. Without knowing, without having their mandate in front of me, I can't be sure that it actually meets that specific language, but rest assured, they are, they have been historically very, very active and engaged on all of this, so I just want to make sure they have the ability to, to access this funding.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the counselor, so I don't think that their, their status as an organization would impact their eligibility. I suspect that they, that what may impact their eligibility is the fact that it's a provincial park. And, and the administrative order that, that we brought forward back in September prioritized the granting of funds for recreational trails to those groups that were building used facilities on HRM parkland, or that were, you know, potentially connected to an active transportation route or something like that if they were not on HRM parkland.
Okay, so I just want to bring in, in a little bit of context to why I'm asking because we have historically, within District 3 and in Halifax, enjoyed the benefit of the, of the, knowing that this, this beautiful island is out there with tremendous rich history, tremendous, tremendous culture and heritage value. But what also has been at play is the, is the continual need for all levels of government to acknowledge the benefit of that and to contribute to it. I worked very, very hard when I was on council before to bring this exact type of scenario to council in a, in a way to clean up the island. We took 30,000 tons off the island of garbage, where HRM came to the table that facilitated the, the heavy equipment to make sure it happened. They facilitated creating partnerships with the province and the federal government and community diving and fleets and barges and the military. And frankly, over and over and over again, for, for situations around McNabb's Island, yes, we don't own it, but this is really a unique situation out there. We still reap the benefit of tourism and, and active transportation and healthy, healthy living and choices within our beautiful harbor. We now can visit George's Island, and of course, Lawler's Island is off limits to, to visitors. So McNabb's Island and the use of our harbor, the recreational use, I mean, I feel like this argument keeps coming back again and again. Now, I was not part of the decision-making around that earlier decision that you referenced. I'm really concerned that we are cutting off access to incredible work, incredible stewardship of a icon, icon of our, of our, of our harbor, our Halifax Harbor, HRM Harbor, that is part of the big municipal picture. So I'm not sure how to get around this. I don't know if there's an amendment here that I can make, but I, I don't want to lose that interest in this, in this discussion. Do we have any, and I'd be open to my councilmates to, to come to the table here and, and help me with maybe sorting this out, because I feel like, yeah, we're just, we're going to drop the ball for them. And that, that is, that is an absolute shame.
John, do you want to speak to that?
I can try and help, Mayor. Traditionally, you know, municipality is not invested in provincial parks or provincial property in that way, and, and all likelihood, this AO would not be the approach. Under the Charter, there is ability to enter into trails agreements with the province of Nova Scotia, either for development, operation, or maintenance of trails. A counselor may want to bring forward a request for staff report to, to have staff explore, you know, an arrangement vis a vis McNabb's Island.
Okay. I'll follow up with you then, John, on just discussing this a little bit further, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, John. Ready for the question, colleagues?
Beginning in District 7, Counselor Mason.
For the motion.
Eight, Counselor Smith.
Four.
Nine, Counselor Cleary.
Yes.
Ten, Counselor Morse.
In favor of the motion.
Eleven, Counselor Cuddle.
In favor.
District 12, Counselor Stoddard.
In favor of the motion.
Thirteen, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Counselor Blackburn.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Fifteen, Counselor Russell.
In favor.
District 16, Deputy Mayor O'Hit.
Voting yes.
One, Counselor Dagelgamm.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, Counselor Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Counselor Kent.
Resolutely in favor.
Four, Counselor Purdy.
In favor of the motion.
Five, Counselor Austin.
In favor.
Six, Counselor Mancini.
In favor of the motion.
And Deputy, and Mayor Savage.
In favor of the motion, the motion carries. So thank you, Counselor Hensby. Thank you, Counselor Kent, for follow-up on your issue. 11.13, kindness meter was taken off consent. Counselor Russell, would you put it on the floor and then discuss as you wish?
Sure thing. Thank you very much. I move that Halifax Regional Council adopt, no, wrong one. I move that Halifax Regional Council direct and authorize the chief administrative officer to execute the contribution agreement between United Way Region Halifax, UWH, and Halifax Regional Municipality as per attachment one of the staff report dated August 16, 2020. I so move.
Second.
Second by Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Russell.
Thank you very much. I think this is an excellent idea for people to be able to go and pay for their parking in whatever way they choose and also contribute to worthy organizations. We do the same thing with our groceries, where we can top up certain amounts of money where, where organizations go and they say, can you also contribute to us? In this case, I, I do appreciate it, and I appreciate that the United Way has been signed up as a, as one organization to, who, who might be able to receive the money. I'm wondering a few different things about this. One of them is, is the United Way, is, is it going to end here? Are there going to be other organizations who might be able to be the recipient of, of people's spare change or the spare topping up on a credit card? Or is it just going to be the, the United Way? I'm just looking for what the vision might be.
John, Scott Sheffield, who wants to take that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor, Scott Sheffield, with Government Relations External Affairs. As it's written right now, the agreement only anticipates that it be United Way. The agreement is for a three-year term and renews automatically. So unless we have direction from council, otherwise it will remain with United Way as being the partner. The direction was given when the original report came in 2017, that, that United Way would be the partner organization. So unless we have direction otherwise from council, it will remain as is.
Okay. Is the technology in the parking meters suitable so that it could house or allow the selection of individual organizations in addition to the United Way or other?
I don't know if, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor, I don't know whether Victoria Horn is available to respond to that question.
Well, Victoria is answering the next question. She may be here for this one and...
Hi, yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, through you to the counselor, Victoria Horn, manager of Parking Services. So the technology is certainly set up that we can receive funds. It's not set up in a way that it's specific as to who the donor is. Right now on the screen, it does say United Way. We can program the technology to have it to whatever council wishes based on whatever agreements they form. That being said, it would require some backend work as we currently have one GL, one account where the money is received. So there would certainly be some backend staffing work as to how we would divide it between the charities, but the residents themselves at the base station would not have the ability to select a charity, for example, which I think is what you're enquiring.
Okay. And understandably, at this point, they would not have the ability to do that because this has just been raised. Presumably, should council direct, that would be able to be done in the future. One of the other things that I was wondering is, if someone is paying by credit card, this can be done. If someone is paying by cash, would they be able to say there's a, I don't know how much the charge is, I haven't paid for parking downtown in a long time, but would someone be able to pay with cash and have some of that directed to the United Way? I see you nodding.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the counselor, it's a separate transaction entirely. So it's not, you mentioned at the beginning, when you go to a store and they tag it onto your bill, it, it's entirely separate transaction. So in some instances, we've seen people make it as stations not to park and just to provide a donation, but certainly if someone is conducting or initiating a parking session, they can then after the fact or beforehand initiate a donation of any kind.
Okay, and this, and this includes continuing to pay with cash, because there are some, there are some services that we offer where people should always be able to pay with cash, and this is certainly one of them. Transit, of course, being another one. But, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I think you can hear me now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to point out that the United Way has a lot of recipient charitable organizations across the province. And so we're looking at Alice House, Bryony House, Shabakto Connections, you know, there's Stepping Stone, Take Action Society, Youth House, et cetera, et cetera. So youth organizations, women's shelters, inclusion organizations, health, and so on and so forth. So, you know, just, just to address your, your concern, Counselor Russell, the United Way is one of those organizations that ensures that lots of other organizations receive funding and support. So I'm very happy to support this initiative. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little delay on getting unmuted. So I'm a champion of the United Way. I think this is phenomenal. The question that I have is on the automatic, it's a three-year term with an automatic renewal. And I know that there's an annual report as part of the agreement. Both automatic renewal offered. What is the criteria, or which, or is it criteria for an automatic renewal? Like, the, the status of accountability is always an important issue, so in three years' time, do we make sure about that?
Scott?
Yeah, well, the, the report would be in relation to the expenditure of the funds. So the expectation would be that the money would be spent within HRM because that's what's stipulated. The, is, there is a lot of flexibility in terms of how that money would be apportioned by United Way, so we're not directing it to a particular type of activity. So the report, I think, would be fairly straightforward in terms of coming back with respect to, this was the charitable purpose to which it was put, and so long as it was put towards a charitable purpose that was within HRM and appropriate use of the funds, then the renewal would take place.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, we just have a little bit of trouble hearing you, Kathy, so if you can speak as clearly as possible.
Okay. So the follow-up question is just that, so then the recipient of the kindness meter in perpetuity now is the United Way? And so three years, automatically renewed for another three years, so for the next six years, the only recipient is the United Way?
Correct, unless directed otherwise by council.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ready for the question, colleagues?
Question.
Ian, it's your show.
Beginning in District 8, Counselor Smith.
Four.
Nine, Counselor Cleary.
Yes.
Ten, Counselor Morse.
In favor.
Eleven, Counselor Cuddle.
In favor.
Counselor Stoddard?
Give it a thumbs up, Kathy.
Ayona.
Thank you. District 13, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Counselor Blackburn.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Fifteen, Counselor Russell.
In favor.
Sixteen, Deputy Mayor O'Hit.
Voting yes.
District 1, Counselor Dagelgamm.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, Counselor Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Counselor Kent.
In favor.
Four, Counselor Purdy.
In favor of the motion.
Five, Counselor Austin.
In favor.
District 6, Counselor Mancini.
In favor of the motion.
Seven, Counselor Mason.
For the motion.
Mayor Savage. Mayor Savage.
For the motion that's carried, thank you to staff, Scott, and to Victoria. Thank you very much. We'll move to 11.1.4, colleagues, its second reading on the proposed bylaw and amendments respecting on-street parking permits. I have a note in my notes here that this is another one of the second readings. I was told by staff to make sure we didn't deal with it until after 1 o'clock. That was not a problem today. 11.1.4, who would like to move 11.1.4? Councillor Wayne Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Halifax Regional Council adopt, one, bylaw P1202, the purpose of which is to amend bylaw P1200, on-street parking permits bylaw as set out in attachment B to the staff report dated November 26, 2020, and two, amend administrative order 15, the purpose of which is to amend section 9A of the administrative order 15, respecting license, permit, and processing fees as set out in attachment D of the staff report dated November 26, 2020. I so move. Second, Councillor Russell.
Councillor Russell, Councillor Mason?
Well, as I vaguely recall from pre-Christmas, we already had an extensive discussion at first reading. So I really have nothing to add to any of the discussions we've had at this point. I support the recommendation. It's a part of a process that we've been on for a number of years and I thank staff for the ongoing improvements to our parking program. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
And questions, since no one's on the list?
See, nobody else. So we'll go over to, and I'll thank staff, Councillor Cuddle on this.
There we go. Yeah, hi. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question about the permit and it goes with the license plate. So the residential permits, like for people who live on a street and they have a permit. What happens if there are cars in the shop and they have a rental car or they borrow a car? Is that easily transferred?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the councillor, thank you, councillor, for that question. Yes, permits can be managed entirely online. So in the instances you just described, we have two scenarios. So for a rental vehicle or if they have a resident, or sorry, if they have a visitor visiting them, they can apply for an annual visitor permit, which is not tied to a plate, it's tied to a civic address. And then that's physically displayed in the windshield. And then the alternative is that they can manage their permits online. So if they did have a rental vehicle for a prolonged period of time, or if their vehicle was in the shop, they can go on and update the plate that is associated to the permit.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That's super convenient. Wonderful.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, Ian?
Question?
Beginning in District Nine, Councillor Cleary.
Yes.
Ten, Councillor Morse.
In favor.
Eleven, Councillor Cuddle. Twelve, Councillor Stoddard.
In favor of the motion.
District Thirteen, Councillor Lovelace.
In favor.
District Fourteen, Councillor Blackburn.
Voting yes on the motion.
Fifteen, Councillor Russell.
In favor?
District Sixteen, Deputy Mayor Outhit.
Voting yes.
One, Councillor Dagelgammon.
In favor of the motion.
Two, Councillor Hensby.
Affirmative.
District Three, Councillor Kent.
In favor of the motion.
Four, Councillor Purdy.
In favor of the motion.
Five, Councillor Austin.
In favor.
Six, Councillor Mancini.
In favor of the motion.
Seven, Councillor Mason.
For the motion.
And eight, Councillor Smith.
Four.
And Mayor Savage.
Four. So that motion passes. Thank you, Councillor Mason. Thank you, Ms. Horn. We will move, 11.1.5 did pass, I believe, on consent. That is the environmental testing for the Halifax Commons Aquatic Project. So John McPherson is off the hook for today. 11.1.6, we have deferred to our next meeting as per Councillor Mancini, I believe, will go to 11.1.7. This is proposed amendments respecting interim grants to community museums. Councillor Hensby?
That Halifax Regional Council adopt the amendment to administrative order 2018-010 ADM, respecting interim grants to community museums detailed in attachment one of the staff report dated October 1st, 2020.
Second by?
Councillor Dagelgammon.
Second by Councillor Dagelgammon. Councillor Hensby, anything on it?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great opportunity to update and revise the granting program for our community museums and having a tiered structure for depending on the size of the management of the project. I think it's a lot more fair for the various community museums depending on their size or the projects they're working on. So I ask for council support in this endeavor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Russell?
Well, thank you very much. I was reading through this and one of the things that I noted is that the grant can be used to buy real property. So there are some museums that have real property and they set up and that's great. And there are other museums that do not have real property. And I'm just wondering how many other grant programs that does HRN have where the recipient of the grant money is able to buy actual real property? Because this seemed, this seemed like something that, as council, we should not really support, but that's just my opinion.
PJ, are you with us and can you answer that question?
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Savage, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Through you to Councillor Russell. Yes, we do have some established programs that permit critical grants for the purchase of real property, the community grants program being one. I think possibly two under the discretionary capital fund. Those capital awards could be used for that purpose. So this is consistent particularly with the community grants program. The purchase of land in and of itself, I'll give some examples under the community grants program. There have been previous awards for resource lands, for example, for conservation purposes. And I believe the regional council has given a contribution agreement to the Nova Scotia Nature Trust to acquire lands, wilderness lands. So typically, they've been in relation to conservation lands, but it is possible that a nonprofit group or a charity may wish to acquire, for example, an abutting property for an expansion of an existing facility. We don't fund under the community grants program or under the community museums program improvements to leased property. That would be private property or government property. So it is consistent with past practice.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to think about this for a few minutes, certainly while other people ask their questions, but I might come back. Thank you.
Excuse me. Councillor Kent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, again, I have sort of a similar question in that, first of all, I'm not sure if I've missed it, but I don't see sort of a definition of what we now consider as a, just coming back to council, what we consider to be a museum. I have a scenario where there is a location within Eastern Passage at the Fisherman's Cove Interative Centre where Fisherman's Cove have a museum-like space that is really the extent of what we have here in the community, but they don't have the word museum. I'm not sure that they have that necessarily in their mandate specifically, but it is, it's been a part of the Fisherman's Cove Development Association from the beginning. So if, I'm not sure, I want to know if this is the type of change that would allow for that, the access to grants in that, in the tiered system. Obviously, this would be one, probably on the polar opposite of an organized and current museum entity right now, but frankly, in communities, smaller communities, where they would potentially start out this way and then be able to grow and become more of a specific or dedicated museum of the area. So PJ, can you speak to that?
Sure. Through you, Mayor Savage. The administrative order does contain a definition of museum. It's under the interpretation section two, section G, and also section H, which defines a community museum. Those definitions were derived from general practice, best practice. And we intentionally at the outset, when introducing this program in 2018, excluded interpretation centers. So I think Fisherman's Cove may fall within the interpretation category as opposed to a museum. Likewise, there was a question that came up around the, the one in Dartmouth, it's an interpretation center there, Councillor Mancini, for the park there. Again, that's...
Fairbank Centers.
That's right, Fairbank Center. So I really do think, without an application for that group, and I would encourage them not to apply formally, they could make an inquiry informally and we could confirm yes or no, rather than put in an application and be declined. But we made a very clear distinction in policy between an interpretation center and a museum. And we were also trying to discourage a museum in name only, with no offense intended to individuals who may have small displays, fixed displays. So it is defined, it is intentional to have a narrow focus at this time. Now that said, this, this report does point out there's a culture and heritage priorities plan in progress. There's also a museum strategy in progress. And without those findings and council's decision, we can't say for sure this is de facto in perpetuity. So it could change in the future, once those findings and council's decisions are rendered. But today, it is intended to be clearly focused and museums as defined.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, Councillor Kent? Okay, Councillor Hensby?
Yeah, I just want to make an example in regards to real property. It also includes buildings of the Heritage Village in Lake Charlotte, had taken and bought some buildings relevant to significant history in the area and had them relocated. They bought the buildings off of one property and then relocated the building and moved it to Heritage Village. So that's how they preserve some of the local history. That way, acquiring real property but relocating at the same time. So that would qualify under that definition of the building.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak?
If I may, just on Councillor Hensby's point, is buying a building and then moving that building to another piece of land, does that qualify as real property? It seems to me that buying the land would be real property, but not buying the building. If you're moving the building, it would be something that is transported to a different section of real property. I might be, I might be confusing things.
If I may, Mayor Savage, I might confuse it further, but we would recognize that as purchase of a capital asset.
Capital asset, absolutely.
Right. So you're not buying the land, you're clearly moving the capital asset off the land, but the building itself would qualify as a capital asset and that type of scenario would be eligible for funding under this program, as it would under the community grants program.
All right. Anybody else?
I'm gonna let this one go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ready for the question, colleagues?
Question?
Beginning in District Ten, Councillor Morse.
In favor.
Eleven, Councillor Cuddle.
In favor.
Twelve, Councillor Stoddard.
In favor.
District Thirteen, Councillor Lovelace.
Voting yes. Thank you.
Fourteen, Councillor Blackburn.
In favor of the motion.
Fifteen, Councillor Russell.
In favor?
Sixteen, Deputy Mayor Outhit.
Voting yes.
One, Councillor Dagelgammon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, Councillor Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Councillor Kent.
In favor.
District Four, Councillor Purdy.
In favor of the motion.
Five, Councillor Austin.
In favor.
Six, Councillor Mancini.
In favor of the motion.
Seven, Councillor Mason.
For the motion.
Eight, Councillor Smith.
Four.
Nine, Councillor Cleary.
Yes.
Mayor Savage.
For the motion. Thank you, Councillor Hensby, and thank you as well to PJ, one of our all-stars. 11.1.8, colleagues, has passed on consent. 11.1, that was the appointment of building official. 11.1.9, general MPS and LUB, municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw. We counsels, I try very hard not to use acronyms here in HRN, municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw amendments for 5853 College Street. Is that Councillor Mason?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. I'll move that Halifax Regional Council give first reading to consider the proposed amendments to the regional municipal planning strategy, our MPS and land use bylaw, LUB, for Halifax Peninsula as set out in attachments A and B of the staff report dated December 18th, 2020, to allow the development of an emergency shelter, shared housing use, multiple unit residential use, and community facility use at 5853 College Street Halifax and scheduled public hearing. I so move.
Second, Councillor Purdy.
There you go. That's how you do it.
Voting a second. Councillor Mason?
So this is great. Thanks to staff for getting this back in support of the rapid housing initiative that we discussed before Christmas. My only question is just a technical one. Why are we amending the existing bylaw and not amending and transferring it to the center plan? I know it's just like the chicken and the egg thing, eventually it'll all end up in the center plan, but I was just surprised to see that we weren't adding the whole thing to the center plan document that is, also exists right now as package A.
Jill McClellan, planner with, with planning and development, through the mayor to the councillor. The reason why we chose to amend the Peninsula Land Use Bylaw versus the regional center plan land use bylaw is there's many less schedules that need to be amended by doing the Peninsula Land Use Bylaw. And further developments within the regional center plan bylaw require site plan approval process, which adds more time to the development review. And so by amending it through the Peninsula Bylaw, we were able to cut some of that review time.
Good reason. Can I accept that? I look for council support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Question?
Seeing no other names on the list. Ian, let's take this one home.
Beginning in District Eleven, Councillor Cuddle.
For the motion.
Twelve, Councillor Stoddard. Thirteen, Councillor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
Fourteen, Councillor Blackburn.
Very pleased to support this, yes.
Fifteen, Councillor Russell.
In favor?
Sixteen, Deputy Mayor Outhit.
Voting yes.
One, Councillor Dagelgammon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
Two, Councillor Hensby.
Affirmative.
Three, Councillor Kent.
In favor.
Four, Councillor Purdy.
In favor of the motion.
District Five, Councillor Austin.
In favor.
Six, Councillor Mancini.
In favor of the motions.
Seven, Councillor Mason.
For the motion.
Eight, Councillor Smith.
Four.
Nine, Councillor Cleary.
Yes.
Ten, Councillor Morse.
In favor of the motion.
Mayor Savage.
In favor of the motion. Thank you, Councillor Mason, and thank you to our staff who continue to work on those housing files, including the rapid housing initiative. Colleagues, 11.2 comes out of environment sustainability, it's passed on consent. That's the ecological lens, so it's passed, which is good, but it means we don't get to talk to Shannon Meadema and Shaloe in Kempton, that's okay. 11.2.2 came off consent. I'll go to Councillor Russell on the sub-report on the regional watersheds advisory board review. Councillor Russell?
Thank you very much. I'll start by putting the motion on the floor, that Halifax Regional Council, one, adopt the amendments, two, the regional watershed advisory board, terms of reference is set out in attachment four of the staff report dated March 10th, 2020, and two, the request to staff report to examine addition of members of the environment and sustainability...
of the Environment and Sustainability Standing Committee to the Regional Watersheds Advisory Board Membership. And I so move.
Second, Counselor Cleary.
Second by Counselor Cleary, Counselor Russell.
Thank you very much. I was looking at this report and I think it's good, how it's consolidating some of the membership and was seeing that it was an advisory board to the to the Environment and Sustainability Standing Committee. The two things that I saw in relation to staff members. One of them is there would be clerk's office staff assigned to this committee to help it function. And the one that was missing was someone, an HRM staff person from something related to environment, someone who had water expertise, perhaps someone like Cameron DeKoff, who would be able to liaise directly with them. So they would be, it says that the terms of reference also state the manager of energy and environment shall be a liaison, but it does not compel the manager to advise the board or to function as a member of the board, it simply establishes that position. So I'm wondering if if we could amend the terms of reference to also include a member of HRM staff with environmental or water expertise. And I haven't fleshed out what that amendment would look like. But this would simply be someone to act as the liaison more directly with the committee.
Who wants that, Phoebe, I see your name here, is that the clerks?
Mr. Mayor, yes, thank you. Through you to the counselor. There is, you know, as part of this motion, there is a request for a supplemental staff report. So if council wishes for us to consider, you know, the potential for putting a staff member as is a member of the Regional Watershed Advisory Committee, we can certainly take a look at that. It is not the custom. Typically, you don't have HRM staff as actual members of the advisory boards and committees, but we can certainly take a look at that.
Okay. In that case, I appreciate that, I would like to move that a member of HRM staff is a member of this committee, and specifically one that has environmental or water expertise, so that they would be able to act in a more act in a role that is more involved in the regional watersheds, instead of acting as a acting in the clerk's capacity, where they are a support role certainly, but they don't have the body of knowledge to be able to work directly with this committee.
Okay, so Counselor Russell, you're proposing an amendment?
An amendment to a membership?
Counselor, Mr. Triggs's voice is
Might suggest that that we would need an opportunity to explore that a bit further in terms of the implications for staff and that perhaps that should be a request for a supplemental report about a further amendment.
Supplemental report to the supplemental report?
Well, I mean, I would suggest if we could pass the motion now and move for a supplemental report to look at a further amendment down the road in terms of adding a staff member to that, once we get some sense from staff as to where and who, how that would be sourced.
Okay, so Counselor Russell, would you be okay with that, that we'll deal with this and then you can put forward a supplemental report?
Yes, I'm happy with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Mancini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wasn't going to speak to this obviously because of the consent agenda, but I don't see the value of having to have a person formerly assigned to this staff member. There's always, the manager is always attending, like any advisory committee, we could always request a staff member to be there at every one. I don't see the necessary, it's necessary to do this. In fact, you know, Mr. Mayor, I question the value of this advisory committee. I don't know how often it's been used, I don't know if someone in the clerk's office here can tell us how often have they met, how many motions have they passed? They have any of that information. At one point in time, I think it was a year or two ago, staff were even recommending to disband this committee, but I think the concern was at the time is the perception by residents that we didn't care about water quality, which is not true at all. So I don't know if staff is here, Mr. Mayor, just to talk about the the activity level of this committee.
Well, we can ask Phoebe and see if there's anybody else that wants to supplement that comment. Phoebe, did you want to speak to that at all?
Mr. Mayor, I can sort of briefly touch on that. There was a report that was prepared for the Environment and Sustainability Standing Committee. They considered that in January of 2019, I believe. And quite correct, staff did an analysis of the Regional Watershed Advisory Board and, you know, put forward some suggestions and recommendations that perhaps the means could be achieved through other means. And that, but that recommendation was defeated by the Environment and Sustainability Standing Committee and the motion was put forward to request this report, which is how we got to where we are today. But certainly that was staff's original recommendation.
Counselor Mancini?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think maybe this is something we can bring back to the Environment Committee for discussion. I really, you know, why have an advisory committee if it's not being utilized? If there's another way of accomplishing what this committee can do, so be it. My understanding, they haven't met that often. They've had numerous motions and most of it has been about internal issues with the committee and there's been nothing respectfully of any substance, so why have the committee? So with regard to Counselor Russell's motion or amendment coming up later on, I won't support that. Let's pass this motion here and then I'll bring it up at the Environment Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cleary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll echo Counselor Mancini on that point. So I was the one who actually, at the Environment and Sustainability Standing Committee, pushed for not getting rid of this body and reforming it, adding to it. So actually, one of the things that we just did at the Environment and Sustainability Standing Committee was try to increase the scope of their purview, so looking at planning issues when it comes to water quality in the watershed. The supplementary report that's clause 2 here deals with looking at that, providing that liaison between councils. Some of our advisory committees don't have a counselor on it, some of them do. So we just want staff to give us some advice on whether or not we should have that staff liaison or counselor liaison. When it comes to staff, as a member, especially in an advisory committee, I would think that would be highly unusual, to say the least, because the advisory committee is advising the municipality, which is our staff. And so Shannon and Cameron, although Cameron is on leave as I understand it. So, you know, Shannon, as the manager, is there at all those meetings. She is very active as a staff member would be to an advisory committee. But if a motion would come forward to put a staff member on an advisory committee, I would have to vote against that too. I mean, that's, I would think, extremely unusual when it comes to. I can't think of another advisory committee that we would have in municipality where we'd have staff on it as an advisor to itself. But anyway, I encourage my colleagues to vote for the motion that is on the floor and to, let's help this committee actually do a better job and contribute in a meaningful way to water quality issues in Halifax. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing Counselor Oatit?
Yeah, just very quickly, I'm wondering if maybe Counselor Russell could address this. I think maybe I'm reading too much into it, but he wants staff to participate in this group. But I think that's different to say, you know, we want staff to attend a meeting, we want to participate a meeting or a group is different than saying being a member. Because a member would be voting. And I think that's, and I think this may be where Tony was heading, where we may be getting offline. So as long as staff always attends these meetings and participates and provide guidance, I'm wondering if that isn't sufficient versus actually being a member. Maybe Counselor Russell could give us a little comfort on that, if he'll achieve what he's hopefully achieve what he's trying to do, having them there without us trying to breaking the mold and making them voting members, just a thought.
Okay, we'll give Counselor Russell a chance to think about that while we vote on this and whether he wants to bring forward another motion. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Let's go to the vote then.
So to confirm, this is the motion as in the report? This is not including any amendments? Thank you.
Just if I may, so if there is a desire for Counselor Russell to make an amendment, it would be to part 2 of the motion that's on the floor, which is already there as a request for a supplemental staff report. So they wanted us to look at adding a member of staff to that in some way. But I would add that staff supports all committees of council, whether it's through the LA's or otherwise, and that fulfills the the right of the CAO to speak in respect of any matter in front of council. So at finance, it's staffed by CFO and other committees have staff members there. So I would suggest it's probably not necessary to make a specific amendment to add a member of staff to a committee as a voting member, because we're there supporting the committee and there would be a representative in any event that's selected based on who the CAO or the director feels is the best to serve that committee.
Seeing no other names? Counselor Russell?
Thank you very much. My interest was simply making sure that there was a a member of staff that was equipped to speak on water-related issues that was, that had the same body of knowledge as the rest of the committee. And if Shannon Medema or another staff member is attending and is able to supply that information to the committee so that they can make informed opinions, they have their understanding of what they do anyway, and to be able to have that integration with HRM, that was simply what I was looking to achieve. So if that is already in place, then there is no need for anything further from any amendment that I was considering. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, let's go to the vote, Ian.
Beginning in District 12, Counselor Stoddard.
For the motion.
13, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
14, Counselor Blackburn.
Voting in favor of the motion.
15, Counselor Russell.
In favor?
16, Deputy Mayor Oatit.
Yes.
District 1, Counselor Dagelgammon.
Voting in favor of the motion.
2, Counselor Hensby.
Affirmative.
3, Counselor Kent.
In favor of the motion.
4, Counselor Purdy.
In favor of the motion.
5, Counselor Austin.
In favor.
District 6, Counselor Mancini.
In favor of the motion.
7, Counselor Mason.
For the motion.
District 8, Counselor Smith.
4.
9, Counselor Cleary.
Yes.
10, Counselor Morse.
In favor.
11, Counselor Cuddle.
In favor.
Mayor Savage.
In favor of the motion, thank you very much. And thank you, Phoebe. John, colleagues, we're going to go a little further here before we take a break. 11.3 Transportation Standing Committee, this is the second reading respecting user charges, child transit fares.
I'll take that, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mason?
As Chair, on behalf of the Transportation Standing Committee, I move that Halifax Regional Council, 1, adopt Bylaw U107, the purpose of which is to amend Schedule 1 of Bylaw U100, the User Charges Bylaw, establishing a permanent fare change for children 12 years of age and under and adopting several housekeeping changes as set out in Attachment E of the Staff Report dated August 10, 2020. 2, direct the Chief Administrative Officer to prepare a staff report considering the potential for discounted bulk purchases of single transit fares, i.e. tickets for both nonprofit agencies and promotional events. I so move.
Second by Counselor Cleary, Counselor Mason.
I think we also talked about this one before Christmas. I'm really glad to see this here. As said before, this is one of the things that was discussed in the United Way Report Regarding Addressing Poverty and Income Issues in Halifax, was to start to grow the youth and then later the seniors access to free or discounted transit. So this plays into what we've already been doing with the low-income passes and with the passes for those that are in income assistance. So thank you to staff for this and look forward to council support.
Thank you. Counselor, or the counsel of this? Ready for the question, colleagues? I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Counselor Blackburn wants to speak to something called PLS. PLS?
Yes.
Or is that please? Sorry.
Please. Thank you. No, just taking note that in the report, it did suggest that a supplementary report would be needed to explore having, can I slide my notes here? To explore having the bulk purchase of tickets for community groups or nonprofits and just wanted to explore that and perhaps add that as an amendment.
I think that's Section 2 of the motion, isn't it?
Yes. Yes, it is signed at five.
Looks like it does direct the CIA to do that.
Whatever you want.
My apologies. Sorry, yeah, it didn't say supplementary report, so I, yeah. I just kept on charging through. My apologies, so a supplementary report on the bulk purchase of tickets at a discounted rate will be coming back to us then. Woo, not only the new ones do that. There we go. My apologies, folks. Terribly sorry.
Nice to see you, Mr. Stigety, after five years. Ready for the question?
Question?
Beginning in District 13, Counselor Lovelace.
Voting yes.
14, Counselor Blackburn.
Voting yes on the motion.
District 15, Counselor Russell.
In favor?
16, Deputy Mayor Oatit.
Yes.
1, Counselor Dagelgammon.
In favor of the motion.
District 2, Counselor Hensby.
Affirmative.
3, Counselor Kent.
Enthusiastically in favor.
4, Counselor Purdy.
In favor of the motion.
5, Counselor Austin.
In favor.
6, Counselor Mancini.
In favor of the motion.
District 7, Counselor Mason.
In favor of the motion.
8, Counselor Smith.
4.
9, Counselor Cleary.
Yes.
10, Counselor Morse.
In favor.
District 11, Counselor Cuddle.
In favor.
12, Counselor Stoddard.
Enthusiastically in favor.
And Mayor Savage.
Yeah, I'm in favor, thank you very much, folks, for that. Colleagues, I think we need to take a break. We do have to come back at 6, we're not going to finish everything on the agenda, so we'll have to go back after our public hearing. I do want to make sure people get a bit of a break in case they want to have to go somewhere to get a meal or a drink. So perhaps what we'll do is we'll break at this point. We will come back at 6 o'clock with the public hearing and after the public hearing, we'll resume. Counselor Mason will take us away on 11.5, 11.4.1 has been deferred. Any questions, folks? We have a new session to come back to, Ian, an evening session?
Yes, to confirm, you have a calendar invitation for 6 o'clock. That'll be the one you go into to begin the public hearing and the public hearing will be starting at 6 o'clock.
Okay. All right, thank you all very much.
Did you say at this location?
Different location. New meeting.
Okay, thank you.